For the meeting tonight, a number of items have been postponed. Item number two, 269 Palmer Hill Road. Item number eight, which is Overlook Drive. And item number nine, which is 702 Steamboat Road.
No, did you say 269?
Yeah.
Don, I think, did you say 269 Palmer Hill has been postponed? Not that one, it's number three.
No, number three, thank you.
Okay, yeah, not number two.
Yes, number three. David Ogilvy, 417 Field Point Road, thank you. It's the first mistake I've made this year so far. Number one is 144 Railroad, Evansville, final site plan.
Hello, I'm Dave Long, representing Claris Construction. We would just like to install a temporary trailer for sales for Cadillac of Greenwich for approximately 12 weeks.
Okay.
Site plan, I brought drawings of what it's a mobile unit. We could put plantings out front. It's on the east side of the building, out of traffic. Shouldn't be.
Okay, comments?
You represent the construction company?
Yes.
Okay, is anybody here from the client?
No.
Okay, well, we had some questions on what's going on in the site. When you put the trailer where you're gonna put it...
Is your light on?
Could you talk about where the cars are gonna go that are on-site now?
The, any cars that are on-site now, they are only gonna keep one of each model. All the others will be relocated to Gateway Garage at 406 Washington Boulevard in Stamford.
Okay, good, 'cause one of the questions we had was that. Now, do you know, and this is where the applicant, it would help, if they have any kind of arrangement with the service station for storing some of their inventory?
None.
None?
Zero.
Okay, so they're just gonna take all their inventory and move it to this location?
Correct.
And it's 406...
Gateway Garage, 406 Washington Boulevard, Stamford, Connecticut.
Okay.
Okay.
And all things associated with the construction, vehicles and so on?
On the, we have designated spots where we're taking one garage bay out, everybody else is on the road.
On the road? Your vehicles are gonna be on the street?
Yes. Unless otherwise.
Have you talked...
Any other comments?
...about that?
What do you...
What do you mean by "on the street"?
Well, just metered parking.
So the construction employees are gonna be at the metered spaces across the street?
Correct.
Oh, okay, got it.
Are there any dumpsters or anything like that involved with this?
They'll be dropped at night and pulled in the morning because Cadillac does not want them there. So if we load one up in the morning, they come in 3:00 and pick it up. But not on the road, it'll be on Cadillac's property.
Anything else associated with the construction that's gonna be on the site?
No, everything will be inside.
So just the dumpster?
Correct.
Is this a large one?
No, 10, 20-yarder at the most, no, not even a 30-yarder.
Will there be any customers coming to the site during the construction?
Just the sales area, yes.
So, and their parking area is not gonna be disturbed?
No, we're, we have strict orders from Cadillac that their parking is tight enough that we have to park off-site.
Any other comments? Any comments in the public?
One question on the left of the trailer, is that a driveway there?
That's just, yes, that is a driveway area, and our trailer's not wide enough to take the whole area.
So will the driveway be closed, or is, in other words, is the trailer wide enough that it impacts the width of the driveway such that cars can't get by it? So with the trailer located where it is, is that going to impact the sight line for that driveway?
No, no.
And that's because it's far enough back?
Pushed back behind the building, correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, motion please.
I would move the approval of the final site plan for the temporary use of the site, for the temporary trailer, for the construction, all of the... What were the comments you wanted?
That the, that the sight lines for the driveway will not be affected by this trailer, which we understand it'd be 16 by 40, and that the inventory of cars that is currently on-site will be moved to, I forgot the address again.
406...
It'll move off-site.
No, 406 Washington Avenue in Stamford.
Gateway Garage.
Okay, 'cause we had specifically asked yesterday for the address.
Yep.
Go ahead, sorry.
Okay.
And the only other thing that will be on the site associated with the construction are dumpsters, which will be daily serviced and not remain there overnight?
Correct.
Okay, that's a motion.
A motion made, second?
Andy, second.
Who's, second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
269 Palmer Evansville, final subdivision.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. For the applicant, Chip Hasland, from Johnson, Hasland &amp; Hoagman. With me tonight is Tanke Angier and Bill Kenny, and I'm hoping the principal of our LLC will be showing up too, Thomas Handler, but he hasn't made it yet. I just wanna recap a little bit of how we got to where we are tonight, and the process we've been going through for about the past year and a half with this project. This first came to us, as you know, it was at a just slightly under 10-acre lot on Palmer Hill Road, and had been developed previously with one house upon it. And our client came to us, Tony and myself, and said to us about two years ago, "What can I do with this property if I were to buy it?" And we went through the various machinations and options that he possibly could have, and gained approval for this, and that included doing a cluster development, doing a conservation development, doing affordable housing under the state statute, or doing single-family housing. And he opted for single-family housing as being probably the best and highest use for the property, and we did too. And we clearly thought that it fit in with the neighborhood as well, which is single-family houses of modest size for the most part, and that they always worth, 'cause it tend to be a lot of estates in this area, but currently modest size. We looked at the issue of whether we could access the property directly from Palmer Hill and create a road, and put in houses that would back up, basically have their rear of the houses on the adjoining properties, or whether we could actually use the lane adjacent to it. And I did some research and determined that, in my mind at least, I thought we had a right to use that lane to get down to Palmer Hill Road, and that was the proper way of accessing these properties and laying them out. So that's what we initially explored. The client felt that he could get eight lots in the subdivision, given the size of the acreage and even having an open space set aside. Tony and I, after considerable work, convinced him that we thought he had a better chance of getting not eight, not seven, but six oversized lots with not 15% set aside, but close to 30% set aside when you have the open space and the conservation easements put together. So Tony worked on this very hard for some period of time, and came up with what he thought, and said to you, I think, the first time, "It's an excellent plan." And I think Tony will say that against you tonight. We have made some modifications in the interim, and they've basically been reflective of comments from conservation, from inland wetlands, from engineering, et cetera. And Tony will run you through some of those, but I, and Bill will as well. Initially, because this is under 10 acres, and we had less than 10 lots, we felt that we didn't have to go to conservation unless you asked us to. It's not implicit in the subdivision regulations that conservation has oversight over this, but you asked us to. And in fact, they asked us to even before you did. So we did a site visit, walked the site with them, we met with them before we got preliminary approval from you, discussed how we might improve the project, et cetera, went back this past February with them, with the different plans, improvements to the project reflective of what they'd indicated to us they wanted to see, and we incorporated most of their recommendations into our plans. And we also addressed, I think, all nine of your issues that you said we had to address in the original preliminary approval. The one being, of course, the conservation too, was included in those original nine. Most importantly, I think, we changed the conservation easement area and open space so that they now connect in the back, and there's not a space between the two of them. That seemed to be a critical issue for conservation, we understood that, we took it back to the client, we explained why, we made that change. In addition, as Bill Kenny will show you in a second, we added significant planting to the basin, the detention basin in the rear, a lot of plants to that area, agreed to maintain two trees, large trees in the property, which are pretty, but as Bill, I think, will testify, are not native species, one in fact is invasive, but we agreed to maintain it. And essentially tried to be responsive in general to the issues of the Conservation Commission. And I think we have been, in general. So comments that came back, I think, from yesterday's briefing schedule indicated that you still had some concerns with comments from the various departments over issues that were still maybe hanging out there, and we should delay this a little bit longer. We think that we are at a stage now where we've met the subdivision regulations, and we're asking for your approval for this particular project, and I'll have Tony get up in a second, and Bill Kenny too, to address other elements. But the issues that are raised mostly in the department comments have to do with lots three, four, five, and six, and their development. And there seems to be a push by conservation, and now by inland wetlands, even though inland wetlands approved this over a year ago, the project as it currently is, to have those four lots developed continuously, or at the same time. And as I think Tony will tell you, that is impractical in this particular situation because we're probably gonna be selling off the lots one at a time. That would be after we take care of all the subdivision documentation, all the easements that we have to record, the maintenance agreements, et cetera, doing all the preliminary infrastructure work that we have to do, we would then be selling off the lots or developing them as a client might request. We're not sure yet which lot is gonna come first, but we will develop the drainage system, starting in lot six, going out towards lot four initially, and we will improve the road so it meets the 20-foot width as required, and we'll make sure that the sewer system can take what's coming down here. If it can't, we're in big trouble because we only have six more lots in this area that a new sewer was just put in a few years ago. So we think we're in good stead.
Let me just stop it for a second.
Sure.
You're committing that you're going to do all of these site improvements for drainage for three, four, three, four, five, six.
Three, four, five, six, correct.
Now, that involves, as you know, there's a lot of grading going on between boundary lines, and there's no, like, it doesn't come up to a retaining wall on the property lines to, in other words, if you wanted to develop lot four first or something like that, I mean, that's really, I mean, you got a lot of work on that affects the other properties.
We realize that, and there's no way we can develop lot four on its own without taking care of the detention basin, obviously, and the other drainage issues that match up to it or feed into it. So that's recognized, we have to do that work.
That is very unclear from the phasing plan you submitted. I think that needs to be clarified, how you are going to come into this site, because as you say, you may wanna sell a lot to a different developer who may be on a different time schedule...
Correct.
...than lot six, which would be the, in many ways, the logical one, number one lot to develop, because then you could work backwards on everything else.
And I think that would probably be the plan, but we could also do lots one and two out in the road, obviously.
I understand, but those are sort of independent.
Exactly, and then, but coming down, we know that we have to have certain infrastructure that we have to put in place before we can go forward developing each individual lot.
That's very unclear.
Okay.
At least it was unclear to me as I tried to fathom the phasing plan that you submitted. We got a real echo tonight, the phasing plan that you had submitted, and I didn't sense what the phasing was on the plan, or what was gonna be going first, second, third, fourth.
Well, I think that should be made clear, so I'll have Tony address that issue in a second.
I think, I think what we're really looking for is for it to be very clearly in writing, in a way that anybody who picks it up later on down the pike, when characters have changed and all that, somebody can just pick it up and understand what you committed to do. We've had a couple of examples of phasing plans that have been so clear and so good that we've picked up later. That would be helpful, 'cause everybody was, conservation was confused, I can't remember who it was who felt like, one thing that would be helpful is if you integrated the S and E plan and the, and the phasing plan all together into one document, into one thing that said, "Here's how it's gonna get developed, and here's how each part of this is gonna fit together," and then that, 'cause wetlands and conservation were raising the same issue.
I saw that, and I think we perhaps thought that what we were looking for was how do you phase each individual lot rather than the infrastructure that is integral to each lot, which we understand.
Worried about, they're worried about the totality.
We got that. But engineering did point out that we have to obviously get approval for each lot as we come in, to a certain extent inland well, and still, we know that.
And wetlands said the same thing, that as you come into the ones that, but part of the issue for wetlands is that what is not within their jurisdiction, they're worried about anyway because of the impact on what is in their jurisdiction. So, yeah, you're gonna come in, but you're not gonna address, they're worried about impact on stuff that isn't in their jurisdiction.
Understood.
So one overall document, and I think you could pick up, it might be a weird thing to do, but almost pick up on some of the sewer questions then, so, 'cause you're talking about, then you're doing a whole, how is all this gonna piece together?
The sewer...
Because it's minor?
It's minor, but we can address that.
But you could, you know, you can talk, this is how the development is gonna be phased, and this is what it's gonna do in totality. I think that'll put, and it'll make those future wetlands hearings a lot shorter, my sense is.
You're probably right in that regard, right? I think the sewer issue is a really minor issue.
It is a minor issue, but it's like everybody was saying, "Oh, is this gonna work, and how's it gonna fit together if..."
Right. And there's a couple other issues I wanted to address very briefly though, too, is there was a request by conservation that we showed where we'd put trees to be removed along the roadway. It was mentioned by them that...
I'm sorry, say it again?
Trees to be removed.
'Cause they don't want you to remove those trees, they're trying to get you to keep them.
Well, actually, as Bill Rutherford said, those trees are worthless. And he said, "What is important is getting some screening between these properties and the neighbors, just be sure to put some landscaping in there." We don't know eventually what each individual property owner's gonna want by way of landscaping the front yard, but obviously that would be an improvement to the property of landscaping and help sell the lot, so we recognize that. So Bill put a notation to that effect on the landscape plan which he submitted to you. I think that was the only other issue we had with conservation, really, and wetlands, was those, the development of those four lots, sequencing of them, phasing, and I think that was really our major issues with that.
I agree.
Mr. Hasland?
Want to have Tony come up?
Mr. Hasland?
Yes.
Just to be completely clear, you're prepared to do the detention system, the full drainage system, before you sell off the first lot, whatever lot it may be, is that...
Well, I'll ask my client, is that the case?
Okay.
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Mr. Handler is here now, behind Tony.
Okay. We, I have another legal we discussed yesterday, so you probably already know this, the private, the right to use the private road. And a solution we had in another matter, probably a couple of years ago, was to ask you to get your title company to do a letter of opinion that you have the right to use it.
We asked the title company to give us a letter of opinion two years ago when we started this. They wouldn't give us a letter of opinion, but they'd give us a policy, so we have a policy.
Okay, policy covering the road?
Right, the ability to subdivide this property into these lots. However, Attorney Ram, I think you'd be happy to know that I actually have a memo from the Association of Tax District indicating that we have an agreement whereby, we don't believe that, we need their permission, but we have their permission to use the road in exchange for our paving the road, and we will enjoy all the rights and fruits of that membership, but also all the obligations. And I have a copy of that email for you, for the record, which spells that out. So I think that hopefully satisfies...
Very much so.
...your concerns. Okay, amen.
Yep, I can pass it down there. Thank you.
Well, did you want, do you want to...
A couple of things. The pedestrian easement from lot six has been kinda shoved on the west property line, and I think it's, it's not the correct place for it, really, it should be on the east side of that conservation easement, pull it down, because lot six, to get to it, I mean, there's a very steep grading in the back that to get over to even get to the easement...
Right.
Where it's not that in the front, and going along the front edge of the conservation easement appears to me to be, I mean, you get into some steep slopes no matter where you put it, but it just seems to be more reasonable to have it there.
Well, Mr. Mayland, I think if you look at the Conservation Commission recommendations, one of the things they said is that the pedestrian easement really is not necessary anymore. Since we put the open space next to the conservation easement, and we have a roadway down here, all lots can access this area, so rather than putting in this pedestrian easement, which is pretty useless, or bringing it through the middle of the property, my suggestion the Conservation Commission was...
The only thing is that, as you know, the pedestrian easement is a requirement of the subdivision regulations and not conservation, so I guess in that case we would, Katie, just, can, are we in a position where we can waive that in lieu of the plan being the way it is? Pedestrian easement is a subdivision requirement.
Right.
301 or whatever it is.
Right. Well, they, they have one there, I'm sorry, I was reading, I was reading the letter.
I was suggesting that they move it, they're suggesting that they eliminate it, because the open space, the conservation easement is connected to the open space.
Oh, and not have it run through...
Will not have it at all.
Yeah, it's connected to also Hillcrest Lane, all properties within the six lot subdivision can get into the open space.
Right, and is it actually navigable through the open space? Can you actually get there physically?
Yes, I was actually gonna suggest to Tony, based on conservation's comments, that we just eliminate it altogether, but it occurs to me that if it is a provision of the subdivision regulations and you don't wanna waive that, leave it in there, it may not be the best pedestrian easement, but for practical purposes, you can use Hillcrest Lane, everybody can, nobody's gonna use this or this to really use it.
Okay, now, the other thing is, is that, that whole area's gonna be monumented and stuff, so people will know where the conservation easements are?
Correct.
Okay. This is probably a question for Tony, but I know what you're doing on lot two with the driveway coming off of Palmer Hill Road, but it intersects Palmer Hill Road at an angle, which is generally not the best way to do it, and I know you're, I'm sure you're attempting to keep the gate or the opening in the stone wall where it is, I just wonder if that road can be at all maneuvered or adjusted so that you can bring it in perpendicular to...
I'll have Tony address that, but I will say the conservation did request if we could try to maintain the stone wall...
Oh, no, I know that.
...and its relationship to the road, so that's the intent.
Right, that was a big deal.
It's just a tough left-hand turn coming up the hill.
Well, they asked about that wall.
No, I know, I'm not suggesting to change the wall.
Tony's gonna address that.
There was something I was gonna ask, and I forgot. All right.
Initially, we showed the driveway coming in to preserve the existing cut in the wall.
Right.
And it showed the feasibility of doing that, it has some problems. The owner, the developer, would prefer actually to come in from Hillcrest, so we have the option of doing that. So that's what we, he would prefer to do.
Okay, but then you'll still maintain that road as your construction road?
Yes, we keep the construction road, we're trying to minimize the amount of activity on Hillcrest Lane as, during construction.
Well, it'd be better access for that lot if you came in off of Hillcrest.
It would serve well for construction access now, keeping the same pattern that it always has, the objective is to turn the house based on Hillcrest Lane.
Let me ask you a question, as to what we were talking about earlier in this thing. Let's say lot four is sold, and they wanna get going on it immediately, and your construction lane now is stopped, you can't get back to five and six with your roadway.
That's something that the developer has to consider, is, from a practical standpoint, but at this point, he is the developer, and he intends to, you know, develop the lots. One of the things that I've advised him is that...
So in other words, lot six will be the bargain lot, it'll be the, you know, so it'll go immediately?
Well, you would hope that that would be, so he could live next to Baba Booey, but you know, he might get something, problem there. But anyway, the idea was that you would have to install the infrastructure of the drainage system, the sewer, the electrical, just as though it were a subdivision road. From a practical standpoint, otherwise you can't develop the property, but the drainage system has to go in, everything is connected to that.
No, but I was more concerned, 'cause I know you're using the existing roadway as your construction road...
Yes.
...to get back in and do all the work and everything.
You raise a good point, and that has to be considered in the, in the way in which he markets the lots if he decides to sell them.
One, because certainly, well, okay, I mean, somebody's not gonna want construction traffic going through the middle of their property if...
Exactly.
We're trying to make the homes appear to all front on Hillcrest Lane, and because of the nature of our frontages, that's the way we had to have that fourth lot, it just works out that way. But because of the, the way they're shaped, we can install the drainage to the back of the lot and not have to be, they wouldn't interfere with the construction of the house in the front.
Okay.
We will, we will mesh the two S and E and phasing plan as we've now gotten closer to what the owner really wants to do. Question is, who's gonna be the clearinghouse? Who are we gonna really work with? I don't wanna, in other words, we're gonna make it, but who's going to review it with us as we proceed? I would hope that we can...
Hopefully, hopefully it'll be staff, I...
Good, thank you.
That's what makes the most sense.
Yes.
If it's all integrated, then it...
I mean, it's, it's similar to a roadway in the subdivision.
Correct, and that's why I said the infrastructure is part of the, of this development that has to be done.
Right, so what we've done with the roadways, and I don't know how you relate this to a drainage, but if, you know, at a certain point, people are trying to get TCOs and move in and whatever, and there's still lots to be developed, so we've done bonding and things like that. But if it's, if it's one owner and the intention is for, for that owner to do a lot of this preliminary work, would he, would the owner agree to do the work before, for the drainage work, before any of the lots get sold off? I asked that, Katie, and Mr. Hasland said, he asked...
It's almost...
He said yes. That's what I...
Just referring to my client.
Well, I wasn't sure if it was...
It's almost a fait accompli, you virtually have to do it.
Right, well, that's why it seems, I don't see how else you'd do it, because like you're saying, it's sort of like the road, except that they're...
I envisioned this as, starting in the northwest corner, you work your way out of the detention basin, but the objective is to keep the basin clean. As you work your way up into the drainage, we decided it was best then to use the bio-retention area, which is later on removed, the dirt is removed and replaced with sand, so in the meantime, we can treat that as a settling basin. Now the, there's no dirt or silt moving down into the clean detention basin where we have all the nice gravel. We're working right along the same route of the drainage system, so we're not wasting any effort. Any excess material will be placed up on top and contained until the platforms for the homes are ready to be constructed. So it's fairly simple in my mind.
If we could just maybe get it on the record tonight about...
Installation.
I'm going to another thing, to the sewers. Whereas DPW, or the sewer department, seems to have one concept, and you're saying that's a different...
They always have a concept, but the fact of the matter...
No, no, but they're saying that you have to prove to them...
The proof is pretty simple, I think, at the end of the day. They did design the sanitary sewer for full development of the neighborhood. What more do we have to discuss?
Why do they keep writing us memos that say different?
It happens on every job, but we work it out, it will be resolved.
Okay.
The fact of the matter is, these homes are not at the theoretical level of occupation, we all know that. So you put in four bedrooms, and you could put 175 gallons per person per day, it's never used in that intensity. Therefore, we go on the basis of how the sanitary sewer was designed for full development in the neighborhood, and they had to have included the 10 acres as full development.
But they did include sort of the...
Theoretical question.
A clause in their last letter, which said it...
While it likely will not be a problem...
There you go.
It's important to have...
Give Mr. Feminina credit, because he gets a lot of work done on our ticket. To his credit, as taxpayers.
Okay, anything else, Rick?
Yes, yes, we got more.
Not so fast.
Not so fast, Mr. DeAndre.
Our staff report talks about this being, your calculations being done on kind of a minimalist houses.
We've already addressed that, and I'll explain it again. When we did the analysis for, and I don't think it's minimalist, because when we did the calculations for the drainage analysis, we established what the coverages were for each lot, and that was included in our discussions with Mr. Marucci. Therefore, we're not minimalist, we're actually giving some excess capacity to the analysis. So when you start to take individual homes, we're gonna go back and refer to what was proposed. If we go over 10,000 square feet of impervious area, and I just picked that number out of my hair, but then we may have to add another gallery to the backside, so that's all it So that's all it is. We've established a baseline. If we go past that baseline, then we'll have to accommodate it.
Then there's, the IWWA says at the bottom, it's first page, the mitigation plan is going to be implemented within six months.
The mitigation plan?
Where are that?
Within six months of the permit? We haven't been able to start working yet.
Within six months of the completion of the basins, the ownership.
Of the basins.
That's fine. It's part of, honestly, that's a problem.
I'm just trying not to surprise you, because that's in here, and it will get incorporated into our-
Right. I don't know what the, whether it would be a problem in accommodating that. Once the basins are in, we're going to plant so we can get beyond it, because we don't want the bond to be staying there forever. They give us two years of bond retention typically. It's fine.
Any comments from the public? It is clear that all of these lots are going to get submitted to planning and zoning.
Yes, every lot goes through that review by DPW on the subdivision.
Right.
And three, and three of them are going to go to Wetlands in addition.
In addition, but all of them will-
Which sent it down the hall anyway.
All of them will come to planning and zoning staff.
And what we should do is the, is part of the phasing plan that you'll, that you'll be submitting, there'll have to be a Phase 1, which will be, you know, the infrastructure-
Yes, but Phase 1-
...site improvements.
Because of the way it goes, Katie, Phase 1 could also include simultaneous activity on Lots 1 and 2.
Right, I'm talking a little bit more about this, but, yeah, exactly.
So 1 and 2 could proceed in a Phase 1, as is our drainage system in the northwest corner.
Exactly. One more thing, our planner says that on Lot 4, the proposed location of a drainage easement and related infrastructure would appear to go through the area of the proposed-
But it doesn't. We set up the-
It doesn't.
We actually prepared an easement map for, as a request of Mr. Marucci, to show him where the pipes are and where the easements are. And the fact of the matter is, we're not going to put up a drain that would interfere with our own design. Keep in mind also that the homes that are on those plans, while they were based on footprints that my client had built elsewhere, we've managed to massage them to fit into those places. Similarly, when the final house plans are done, certainly we'll take into account the drainage easement. We're fully aware of that. The other question, I think you raised a question about the circle. Keep in mind, the circle was set to create the buildable area of the lot. Then, after that, based on Mr. Tessie's regulation change, we can move the circle wherever we want. That's to prove that it has a certain shape. So the circle can move anywhere. It has dual purpose in that lot, number 4, which is to prove what the buildable area is after the accessway is subtracted.
The only other question was, one of the drawings ended up with that 150 diameter, 150-foot diameter circle in the open space. Just a drafting error, I'm sure.
I'm not aware of that. Where did I end up with that? Unless the record sheet?
You're going to make me find it now.
We had such a long discussion.
No, I know.
I think it's on the development plan, it shows the circle on the open space.
Shows the circle on the open space, that's all. It just-
I didn't think you guys looked at this.
You didn't, huh?
Oh, yes.
Most of the time, we don't.
Come on, you know, you know Maitland, Matt Ryan, it's clop's better than that.
Okay, I think we're all set. I'll tell you in a minute.
Mr. Haslam or Mr. DeAndrea, I just have one question. The perpetual access for maintenance of that basin, what's that language going to say? I mean, you should, there's a wall, it looks like, in there. Is that going to be prohibitive once that's established, or what's going to be the language of that?
We don't think that it's, it's a problem to consider that if and when we ever had to get down to the basin, that we wouldn't need equipment. So if we need equipment, we'll make a road, and if there's a wall in the way, we'll get over it. It's not uncommon. It's not like a six-foot-high wall.
The circle is shown on your subdivision plan.
I don't know where, but I'll look for it.
Subdivision plan, that's the easement plan. Find the subdivision. Since you wondered where it is, I think you, your nickel?
There it is.
That's just showing a-
Shape, that does, it just shows that it's 150 feet wide. We can take it out, it doesn't-
Doesn't show any, I-
We'll take it off.
Good.
It wasn't intended to suggest it was a lot. Okay, we'll take it off.
We'll take it out.
Mr. Haslam, I'm actually not sure how we would word this, but one of the things that in the resolution, we made one, would be to ask that you come back in for review if ownership or the development plans were to change, and I'm open to how to word this from any- No. We don't ask people, because normally on a subdivision, the development isn't, is intrinsically tied, one lot to another, and that's really what I want to address. I just want to protect that concept of that simultaneous development, how, and that if for some reason they went into different ownership or something happened, that we could maintain that coordination.
I still have to, I've submitted a draft early on of the easement agreements, the maintenance agreements and whatnot. We've made some changes since then, so why don't I tweak that a little bit? I think the ownership issue is, and I don't think my client has any plans on selling it-
But you never know.
In total, but, exactly, so-
And then people forget-
I think that's problematic, but as far as the documents being filed and recorded that bind the owner of the property, whoever that might be, I think that's sufficient.
Okay.
Mr. Haslam, before you filed the Mylar on the land records, do you reckon that you'll, that'll be enough time to get this document that is referred to in this email in writing?
I think so. I mean, the indication from the tax district and the association is that they thought we were going to start construction in April, which is, is not going to happen, obviously, and they want me to take the first draft at it and just run it by their lawyer, so I can, I'll jump on it as quickly as I possibly can. My client's anxious to go.
Okay.
I think that would solve the problem 100% at that point, because all this indicates is, yes, they're willing to, you know, that they've, they've given you the okay, but there's nothing in writing, no signatures and whatever, so prior to the filing of the Mylar, that would be good to get that ironed out.
I think the only difficulty, we actually met with him about a year and a half ago, initially to talk about it, is that they-
Yeah, you did.
They have association meetings just so infrequently and trying to get people together to approve something like this. But I'll work on getting it out as quickly as possible and gain approval as soon as I can.
Okay.
All right.
I'll try again. Anything from the public?
And just quickly, if anybody's here for 702 Steamboat, it has, the applicant has postponed it to March 32, March 22. Yes, no?
Dick, do you want to make a motion, please?
Yeah.
I would move the approval of the final subdivision with the following comments.
Oh, we're going to help you.
I'm sure you will. That the subdivision map be corrected and just the next rainy circle removed from the open space parcel. That a, a clear phasing, that the phasing plan be documented in such a way that it is clear that the necessary infrastructure and drainage easements and drainage facilities across 3, 4, 5, and 6 are done concurrently so that not all lots can, and function after that's, that's done. In other words, it has to be done as a single phase.
And incorporates the soil and erosion control plan.
Okay, but it's, it's important to get that phasing and clarified on the phasing map that you've sent us, since it's not clear.
I'm sorry, you said the development and just the infrastructure, right?
Well, clearly, the drainage across the back of the property has to be done in one swoop, because it, it works, it works together. So 3, 4, 5, and 6 are all intertwined, and if the lots are going to be sold to different people, that, that infrastructure has to be in.
And what, and then what got addressed by Wetlands and Conservation on that same theme is the issue of grading as well, so that soil and erosion control plan, as well as the phasing of the, of the grading be incorporated into that, because that was what they raised.
And you want that noted on the Mylar?
I want, yeah, I want it clear on the Mylar.
So that it's filed on the record map?
Yeah.
That has to occur.
Yes. And I think that, to pick up the next one, is that the, the document that he gave you from the homeowners' association regarding access to the properties should be, needs to be finalized too, and hopefully can be incorporated, and shall be incorporated on the subdivision map.
And, so, sorry, so the, so the legal agreement that they come up with, with the homeowners' association, that has to be referenced on the Mylar?
Yes.
Mr. Maitland, if we may just address that issue?
It seems like we have a very strong agreement in principle, but if for any reason I'm not able to resolve that issue-
We give a lot of extensions to the subdivision map, so we'll await you, we'll give you-
We'd come back and want to address that issue again.
You'll probably ask for a sub, you'll probably ask for an extension to get the subdivision map filed.
Understood.
It's good to have a goal, and it's good to have, it's good to have a, an endpoint.
We agree.
Okay. Actually, we'll just, okay, I think with the pedestrian easement, we'll just leave it alone, because we're not using it anyway, so it's kind of irrelevant. I think ideally, the entrance way off of, for Lot 2, it was stated that it might likely go to, to Hillcrest, and that would be acceptable. And that, also, I guess that just to make sure that in that letter from them, we get the access for five lots.
It says five lots.
I think that the matter of the sewer department needs to be resolved. Obviously, you won't be able to build anything without the resolution of it, so it sort of speaks for itself that it has to be resolved. There was, there was some question regarding the maintenance road to the north was, I missed that, somebody was talking and I was doing something else, so what was it?
Pat? My question was, will the language of that prohibit anybody from putting any structures in there? And Mr. DeAndrea indicated that there doesn't appear to be a need for that prohibition.
Okay. Need for what provision?
There does not need to be a need for that prohibition.
Prohibition.
Prohibition, not permission.
That there be structures in that drain, in that access line.
Well, okay, the only thing is, that, that needs to be shown, because it's not on the development plan that you've given us for the Lot 6. In other words, that access to get to the back of the property is, is not shown and-
I think it is shown, actually, there's a maintenance easement area shown.
But it's not shown on, there's two, there's so many plans, that it's on some and it's not on others, so-
Make sure it's unified throughout.
It's on, yes.
And the idea is that the owner of Lot 6 cannot prohibit, basically, the access across that easement to get down there to maintain-
However you do it legally and so forth, but that, that's, it'll have to be shown on his property, you know, on, on, on the development too, because right now, it's not shown clearly.
Okay.
Because, all right. I think that's it. I don't have anything else, other than the fact that all, all site plans for all six lots will come to planning and zoning staff.
Okay, I just got, I have a couple of notes. The 20-foot width, I think we should just note that the, the applicant will be bringing the-
Excuse me, one second. And address all comments from-
Engineering.
DPW Engineering, Sewer, IWWA, and Conservation.
So in those, the 20-foot widths, the, the two trees that are, are shown on the plan, but the Conservation has again asked, which is the Japanese maple, the 28-inch Japanese maple, and the Norway spruce, and then all the notes that staff has that are to be added as well, and that's it. That's the last notes I have.
You finished?
Yep, I am.
Okay, second?
Second.
Who's second?
Andy's second.
Okay, all the favors say hi?
Hi.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, item number three, we've already discussed, has been postponed, so we're now going into the public hearing.
So we're only half an hour late.
Okay, first item on public hearing, preliminary coastal site plan and special permit 88 South Water Street.
Mr. Chairman, John Tessie, here this evening with Mr. Ridberg, whom you know, and Mr. DeAndrea is also here, the engineer, in connection with this application, which you've heard a couple of times now. We last submitted to you, again, as you know, and as you discussed yesterday at your briefing, a concept developed by Mr. Ridberg and our client for a single building renovated from what you've seen before, changed from what you've seen before, on the south side of the property, in lieu of the two approved buildings. I understand from your staff briefing that a number of the commission members feel, given the deadline for you to make a decision in this application, that you prefer that we withdraw the application. Now, I don't know, I wasn't at your briefing. To me, I think we've reached the point that we can go any way you, what you'd like with this application. The most important thing for us is to move forward productively, and moving forward productively, at least in terms of the, the next steps, subject to your comments this evening, with this plan is really to proceed to the Architectural Review Committee to review the building and comment to you, and in the interim, as we prepare to make our next submission, what I believe would be a final submission to you, we would address outstanding questions regarding DPW, questions regarding-
Reason why it came up is, if you'll notice, we must close by 3:17, by March 17th. That's why it came up at the beginning.
That's fine. I freely appreciate that. It's been a process here, and we've worked together, and I think we've, Rudy's welled up with, lack of a better word, an elegant solution that seemed to have incorporated into it a lot of the comments made by commission members, but obviously, you can speak for yourselves. I'm just trying to move, move things along in a logical sequence here. They were comments made by our client last evening, last meeting, which even, he admits with respect to the environmental, that well, that being confusing to you, and certainly in the interim, we will explain it in greater detail, work, provide staff, and by the time we make our next submission, we think we can spell it all out in plainer English than perhaps was uttered during the, the last presentation to you. We also want to work with DEEP. We have some ideas regarding the public access area and what we can do to enhance it a bit more along that south, that southwest corner of our area that we would explore. So the bottom line is that we appreciate all the time you've spent on the application. We're happy to answer any questions, but we also don't want to burden you. If you feel you're just not comfortable enough to issue a proceed to final, we would appreciate that, but we understand what you, what your wants are from the previous hearings and from the staff briefing yesterday, and we would proceed accordingly, so we're flexible.
I don't, I didn't get the same feeling from the meeting yesterday that we wanted them to withdraw.
Oh, well.
No.
I, I, I think we're far enough along, frankly. I don't think that-
Well, I, with every point that Mr. Tessie just said, except for one tiny, tiny little piece, which is that I don't feel that they, it's ready for final, and that, the reason being that right now, it's a preliminary, and if the commission does want this to go back to court-
Right.
And that's the big question. If you wanted to go back to court, I feel very strongly that that should happen with a preliminary plan, not a final plan. Once you issue a final plan, that's now a final approval. You can't, you can't do that subject to something, like, like the court's-
No, I understand that, but I mean, that doesn't affect the preliminary, but we could make that a condition, couldn't we?
Of what? There's, there's no-
Something to-
There's no plan to take to the, there's no plan to take to the court yet, because you don't know what's going to happen with DPW, you don't know what's going to happen with their conversation with DEEP, so there's nothing to take to the court. So that was the idea behind the withdrawal, that they could do everything that Mr. Tessie just described, come back to you with a final, you know, a more complete plan, rather, that you could act on and move to final, if you were, if you were happy with it, and then that plan could go to the court, and then they could come, assuming it went well with the courts, they could come back to the Planning and Zoning Commission at that time for a final site plan approval.
Well, I guess I disagree with that, because I always equated this process to be similar to a settlement, as if we didn't have a settlement. And what this commission has done when it's settled matters is heard an applicant, got it to the point where we actually had plans, the final plans, as part of that stipulation, and submitted it to the court at that time for approval, noting, because you can note it, because we've all accepted this as a matter of fact, that you don't, that because it's a settlement and because it's a change, you cannot unilaterally agree with us, and we've had a discussion with Attorney Raymer, certainly, and I agree with her, you cannot unilaterally agree with us to change this, to change what was approved in a material sense, and obviously swapping one building for two is, is material, I think we all agree. So I was just going along with the process, Katie, that you would want all your ducks in a row, and then we submit to the court, because we all acknowledge that you cannot, because of that settlement-
Yes.
-undertake a final approval that would be consistent with the approval of the court.
I think you're right, Mr. Tessie.
Katie, the-
I think he's right.
A move to final is not a binding thing, so it can't go to a court. The only thing, I think, that can go to a court is a final decision of this body, so the final decision can be conditioned.
What Katie is saying is that if we give the preliminary-
Can I finish?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
The, the final decision, the, the approval of a site plan can be conditioned on the The, the final decision, the approval of a site plan can be conditioned on the approval of the court. So that if it doesn't get approved by a court, it doesn't exist. That's, I think it has to be like that.
Yes, 300%.
So, it's conditional on the court approval. But, but a preliminary is not, as we, you know, we all know, it's not, it's not, it's not binding, it's not a, it's not reviewable by a court.
Well, interestingly, this, I agree with you, except for one odd little thing, if I recall correctly, that this particular application actually was appealed on the preliminary, oddly, and it was settled on a preliminary plan. Because generally, I agree with you, that I don't think preliminaries are appealed, but this commission decided to settle, actually, on preliminary, am I right?
Well, I wasn't, I wasn't involved in that, but you were in the unique situation where you had, you actually had two different cases, and you were dealing with the state statute, which kind of throws everything up in the air, the 830G. So that was a bit different there.
There were two appeals.
Exactly, it was two different cases.
There were two different site plans that were appealed, and in, actually, in the process of the settlement, a third plan was developed.
There you go, yeah. The only point I was making is that the preliminary...
What got approved by the court.
There's a lot of logic to it, and it's certainly, I agree with the technical points, but you would want, when we, we all would want, when we go to court, to really have the final, final plans. Because when we, historically, when we come back between preliminary and final, people think of other things, tweaks, so we, we've had enough, I think we all agree, we want to put this to bed in one final action. And the state, the statement of really the law, as a condition, this has to be approved by the court, is totally appropriate, I agree.
Well, if the commission feels comfortable with, with, I mean, that's what the court is doing. So you would have to feel comfortable that the timeline issue is sorted out.
The what?
The timeline issue that we've beaten to death here, but the timeline issue is sorted out, and that you do have the legal right to amend a settlement. And so, if you feel comfortable with that, I mean, that's really what you'd be doing if you agreed to move to final.
I think, I think we do, I mean, that's, that's at least my feeling, everybody. All right, okay.
Well, except I'm puzzled. What I heard Mr. Tessie say, and when I started to interrupt you, is that if you had, if you had a preliminary that included a site plan, you believed that you could go to the court with it successfully?
No, I, no.
That's the opposite, okay, so then you and Mrs. Raymer are saying the same thing?
I...
100%, okay. Got it. Okay, got it, so you guys...
I didn't want that to be heard loudly.
You guys are on the same page, okay, got it, then no problem.
No, I think...
If you did want it to be done on a preliminary, I do think you could do it based on the fact that this settlement was based on a preliminary plan, number one, and also, you're asking for the opinion of the court, which is what you're doing after a final also. So it's, it's just, you know, that's...
I think the best way to do, personally, I think that we should deal with this as a preliminary, let's make our comments, let's get everything put together for the final, and then, that would be, once we're comfortable with it as a final plan, even though, whether we have or have not voted for it, but if we're comfortable with it, then I think that's what would be, go back to the court.
It's not legal, the document has no effect.
So you're saying we have to make it, well, see, what I'm saying to you is that...
He's not, he's not being, he's not being complicated, he's just saying, close, move me to final, I'll go do all the stuff I have to do, I'll come back with a final.
And then he'll go to court.
If you want to, you'll approve it, and at that point, it'll be approved conditional on it being approved by the court, and that's...
Yeah, because what you ordinarily were doing in the final chances are, you'd probably make a few comments saying, we want you to give us your final plans, et cetera, so we want the final, final plans.
As long as we can do that, that's fine.
Yeah.
I think that, I'm comfortable with that.
Okay.
Okay, what issues do we have? What issues do we have that are still open?
Okay, just, I just, I'm being slow here, you would not go get a modification of a settlement until you are, have final from us?
I don't have a power to do that unilaterally, we have to do it with the town, and it's a modification of a stipulation that we both sign.
But you're comfortable with it.
I think that's the exact way to do it. I think that puts everything on the table, it's clean and concise at the end.
Okay. What, what, do we have any other issues now to review?
Yes, we have some issues on the preliminary site plan that we would like to discuss with them.
Okay.
I'm confused on the matter of the, I think, I think, while I know I felt, and I thought other members of the commission felt strongly about the additional access along the south edge of the property.
Uh huh.
And, the statement was made at the last hearing that this site has not been remediated. And as I read the Connecticut, or the court stipulated agreement, I read, the site meets or exceeds contamination, I don't know the exact language, but it's in the court...
Yeah, I can explain, this is where my client got carried away a bit, and didn't explain it well.
Let me just finish my thinking, though.
Oh, go ahead, sure.
Because the site plan that we got from you shows that site on the south part being used for recreational reasons. I mean, if it's, if it's suitable for kids to go play on it, and people to use it...
Yes.
Why isn't it suitable for people to walk over it?
Your client told us that nobody could walk on it, because it was too dangerous.
Well, my client was, what happened is, he was concerned about a number of issues, because that was a curveball he wasn't expecting, nor do we, and we still think it's not appropriate, and I'll give you a few reasons why, but he threw in the, he threw in the environmental point. What he was trying to describe is that the whole, the north side of the property has been overlaid with, if you will, with an environmentally end-use restriction, an ELUR, which basically had to do with encapsulation, and then you poured dirt over it, and the whole point was, you do your site plan, you stabilize the site, and that's it, and that's in comportment with the, with normal provisions of the DEEP when it comes to that. The north side hasn't been developed yet, so he hasn't finalized the...
The north side has been.
It's south side, thank you. The south side has not been developed yet, so the encapsulation obviously hasn't been completed. We haven't put in the parking area, we haven't put the final touches on it for the environmental land use restriction to be filed. So what he's trying to describe is, there's no environmental land use restriction yet on that portion of the site, bless you, because that does not happen until you finish, you finish that work.
But I'm saying, the site is going to have to be usable by people.
Absolutely, it is, it's 100% going to be usable by people. So what he was getting involved with, when you, when we were, when you were suggesting that there should be this, this second, second east-west access on the south side, was that there were a number of issues with that. One is what the surface is going to be, do we have handicap issues? Do we, do we, does he need to take that into account with his site plan approval with DEEP when it comes to the ELUR? But over and above that, that can all be addressed, there's a, there's a cost to bring it in, to the site. The real issue there is privacy. The real issue has to do with, with a situation where...
I don't, I don't really, I'm not really understanding that, because right now, your site plans...
Yeah.
...show the west side of this building being open to the boardwalk, and gated and closed off with fencing.
The west, the west side...
The west side of the property, right now, is being opened completely to the boardwalk.
I'm talking about, oh, I understand that, on the west side, I'm talking about, we have a situation where the...
So what's the difference between that?
We're talking about the, because it's an access, because it's an access area, and with respect to the north side, as you know, there's, there's a buffering wall that secures the privacy of the people, the way it was designed. This north, this south side is being designed, in a way, whereby it's going to be totally open, and the idea that for people's privacy in those homes, that people are going to be able to, all day and night...
Floor.
Excuse me?
They're up a floor, they're...
I didn't interrupt the floor, but the point is, it literally turns it into a bit of a thoroughfare when it's not necessary. So he has a real issue with that when it comes to the value of his property, the amount of money he's putting in, into privacy for the people. When, our view is that there's very little public benefit gained by this additional accessway. There's really no reason, because you say, well, no, we like the people who enjoy the water, right. But what's that have to do with putting in another, I don't know what it is off the top of my head, but about 300 feet of accessway that has nothing to do with the water? The purpose of the accessway is to get to the water, and you don't need two means within a couple hundred feet to do it.
Mr. Tessie?
I mean, that's his concern.
I think there's a piece to this that you're not recalling. This is a W B zone.
Yes.
So it's not supposed to have housing on it. It's supposed to have, importantly, a public access.
Yes.
So, the housing is to your client's great benefit, what he wants to do, but this is intended to have public access. If I were to ask Mr. Goucher, if he thinks there should be a south walkway, what do you think he's going to say?
The answer is, I have no idea, but...
Well, I'm gonna, I mean, his email is...
So, the...
Is replete with his concerns about the conflict between this private building and the public access, and that important right. It's all the way down the...
His concern, because I was out in the field with him, was that there would be a, what's the right word, an ambience here about it all, to entice people to go out there, although you can't see it from the street, and he was, he was thinking of the streetscape, the only thing you really see is Costco. But the point here, I'm trying to make, is that when, no one's denying the public access, this is a wonderful amenity for the community down there, and there's tremendous, beautiful walkway, presumably someday, that other building next door will be completed, but there's a wonderful accessway there. And what you also have to remember, there's even public parking space, parking lot on that north side, to allow people to drive, drive onto the property, and...
That's for the YCOP.
No, it's not for the YCOP, it's specifically, no, that's not, that's not entirely true, but Katie can respond to that. We had to specifically provide, it was for public access parking, public access parking, and we have signage for that, she's nodding her head, it's absolutely true.
True.
And when it comes, and when it comes to the issue of, so I'm just saying, there's public access, we're 100% for it. We're also willing to modify the original, as a matter of record, we're willing to modify the original approval, which essentially reserved half of those, half of those...
Ducks.
...slips, for the residents. We're willing to give that up as part of this, and 100, and we will not reserve or have any priority for any of the residents of that community. So we're going beyond the original approval, and actually freeing up a total now of 20 slips for the general public. Again, part and parcel of public access. The only thing we're saying is, we'd like, we would like not to modify the original negotiated approval, which did not call for that, in exchange for what we're producing, which is one bedroom, less floor area, not one bedroom, one building, less floor area, a greater, a greater view plane. Now, this is something I can say to my client, look, they want us to consider that strongly, but you know his feelings, and then he'll have to make the decision between preliminary and final. We prefer that you drop it, but if you're not going to drop it, we'll take it seriously, we'll talk it out, and that's one of the things that happens between preliminary and final, client has to make a decision.
I understand.
Tessie, I'm going to read this, page 171, Mr. Goucher's email. Future connectivity is also important, particularly to the south. We recommend that the public access path be located on the ground, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. I mean...
I think this is a preliminary, and I think we can make that...
I can tell you what exactly that applies, exactly what that applies to, because again, I was out the site, so was, so was Tony, and so was Rudy. That had to do, and we walked the site between the part that's completed now, the north side and the south side, and we were going to figure out, and Tony can comment wherever he is, further about it, that connectivity had nothing at all to do with a public access from the street to the water on that side. It had to do, yes, it had to do, how to do that, and I've talked to my client even today, and he said, he likes the idea of even expanding it and have kind of like a little promenade on that second area, where people can turn around, there also could be additional benches, et cetera. So he's willing to enhance what the original approval provided for.
I just wanted, on the record, that the idea of the privacy of your apartments are being modified in a number of ways. Number one, apartments that face South Water Street, and number two, the apartment that faces the river, has people walking in from the boardwalk right up to there.
300%.
Okay, so there's really no difference if that is, you're better off, I would rather have you modify that relationship and have the fence along the boardwalk, and provide the south walkway, which is then the same thing, the people aren't, their privacy is assured.
Well, you've got to remember, the way, it's, it's, it's...
I'm just saying...
Longer building, so most of the red, the apartments are going to be, obviously...
You've done a good job so far, you've given us more views to the water, the building is shaped well, it's down to the 20 units and everything.
Right, right, right. All right, we have a good faith discussion on this, I get it.
We've had a good faith discussion.
About that phrase.
Okay.
Just a second. Okay. And it's clear that the site will be completely remediated to the south property line.
It's completely remediated as necessary to the, well...
It has to, because, well, you can't...
No, no, absolutely, in fact, we're not, that's, that's already provided for in the stipulation, in the sequences, so we're not looking for any modification of that whatsoever. Agree 100%.
Fine. I do, I do, well, I think, we just have to close this tonight, that's all. So I don't have any more comments.
Okay, anybody else? Anybody else, before I go to the public?
Approve the preliminary.
Did you want to say something, Margarita?
I'm just asking Katie something, if DPW has said not to. I just, I'm just asking, you know, no, but, I'm just saying, you know, DPW did ask us not to approve the preliminary until they were happy, I'm...
Where did they say that?
On their comments.
Page 169.
Thank you.
I mean, it's from December, and...
169.
The applicant made a, okay, so the applicant made a decision that, not address the DPW comments until we were okay with the building layout. But DPW wanted their issues addressed before we approved the preliminary, I'm just asking...
The problem is, we're out of time, we have to close this tonight, so...
I get that. I get that. They couldn't draw it, and Mr. Tessie did offer to withdraw it.
I think we're, I, I kind of agree, I kind of agree with what Katie is saying, I, what Mr. Tessie is saying, I mean, if we've made progress, I hate to lose it. I don't see, what are we, what are we having a problem with from DPW, do you know? I look, I don't...
It has to do with the...
Katie, anything specific?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't see where it lies.
Well, I mean, part of the argument too, is when, is when DPW did, these comments are based on the previous plan, which was a bigger footprint.
Right.
Now, some of the issues that he raises, though, were about the infiltration and the remediation of the site, but we have the engineer here, we might as well ask him what his thoughts are.
I'm just sort of curious, if, yeah, if any of these things are a problem.
Tony's going to say...
I mean, he does say that the drainage summary report is acceptable in concept, he says that in number two.
Where does he say, just, I'm not arguing, I just don't see, where is it?
The box, the checkbox says resubmit for review.
Yeah.
And it will be resubmitted.
What does that mean, resubmit for review? We are between preliminary and final, I mean, what's the big deal?
I understand, it will be resubmitted.
Yeah, of course.
I don't see anything here about...
Well, he does, I mean, he does say the drainage summary report is acceptable in concept, and he talks about some, you know, sizing issues and things along those lines that need to be addressed.
I didn't see anything, there's nothing on it that says we can't do the preliminary. Like, he wants to see it again, but he will see it again.
Yeah, he's, absolutely, now that we have a plan, you seem to be comfortable.
Are there any comments from the public? Anybody want to say?
I am super uncomfortable with it.
Good evening, I'm Matthew Pop, 54 Mead Ave, landscape architect. I came here, I think, about two months ago, and it'd be great, again, to see this project move forward, so whatever you could do to help move this forward. I haven't reviewed the plan since the last time, actually, I walked the public access today. I think it would be nice to have that southern accessway, because it makes the waterfront more usable. When it's, right now, it's kind of a dead-end walkway, and if there is no southern access, it makes it a longer dead-end, the southern part along the water probably comes less usable, but if you do have that southern connection, any kind of a loop, I think it's a little bit more valuable. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Yes?
Vin de Marco, for the record, I apologize for not knowing the answer, but is there bicycle parking required on this site? Is it already there, maybe, or from the previous development? Or will there be bicycle parking required for the whole development? Thank you.
We apologize for...
I don't think it came, yeah. Okay, anybody else? Okay, let's, any other comments from the commission?
I...
Let's go then.
I just, before you guys close, I'm just not comfortable still with this, and I don't want to mess up the applicant and make an unnecessary delay, but I think that if we look at this application compared to what we normally approve at preliminary, this is not there, and I'm uncomfortable with that. So I just wanted to throw it out there before we closed it, so someone could make me comfortable.
Okay.
We'll do that in the discussion phase.
Well, we can, because if we close it, if we close it, we take away the applicant's.
What are you uncomfortable with?
There's no, there's no site plan that we're actually approving at this point.
Well, actually, there is a site plan. It's, it's, I think it's a generation old.
Right, exactly. There's no, we don't have a site plan that incorporates everything that's happened.
There's, go to the landscape plan.
Okay, so three things.
Go to the land, you just submitted to us a landscape plan with a site plan on it.
DPW deep concerns remain outstanding.
Are any of those concerns that can't be dealt with between now and final?
I'm just saying that if we treat all applicants the same, this applicant has something that's less than what other applicants normally have at preliminary. And I'm, I'm happy to be convinced that because of the stipulation, it makes sense to do it in this way, for example, but I just would like you guys to say that and talk about it. And if we close it, I think we, and, and then there's a discussion, I think we've taken away their opportunity to withdraw.
Well, first of all, quite frankly, it doesn't matter, well, let me, before saying that, I respectfully disagree with you. I think this is going through a number of iterations, this plan. We've worked as closely as we could with this commission to come up with a plan that I think at least others are very comfortable with in terms of the building. We've gotten comments from the EEP that we're taking into consideration and we're going to have to take in consideration your further comments, because I think I know what's coming regarding the south access way. We have the, your Department of Public Works comments where they're comfortable with the, with the overall concept developed by Tony, but we have to deal with the specifics. I don't know how, we have a, which you don't usually see in preliminary, you have a, a very well thought out landscape plan that, that graphically shows you what we're talking about. There, there it is. So quite frankly, I've seen you much less comfortable a number of times.
You have.
On preliminary plans, but proceed to final it a long, long list.
Mr. Jesse, one last.
So I'm not sure what we're missing to, to give an advisory opinion.
One, let me just finish. One last one. The remediation.
Yes.
You're also saying that we're not going to see a concern with the remediation between now.
Well, let's remember something, again, on that point. The remediation concept was, was developed.
Back when.
At the time of your approval. We can proceed now and, without getting into a discussion over, but we have a plan now. Remediation was known as a requirement and staff had to be satisfied. We're not asking to change that condition. So in fact, it's even more enhanced because you're getting a current 2016 set of eyes on it, as opposed to relying upon what happened way back when and not looking at it. So we know we're going, so we're going to bring to the fore something that's been basically, you know, on, not the back burner, but something that you, that would not necessarily have even seen, had we just completed the plan as it is. So you're act, so I think this should allow you, again, as part and parcel of this process, to even feel more comfortable that you're going to get to see it and understand it as a commission prior to considering a final plan approval.
Let me finish this.
Please.
Because I have to be able to vote on it and I, this is the only opportunity I've got to go through this with him.
Sure.
And I have to be, I have to decide if I'm comfortable or not.
Yeah, I'm, I'm trying. I'm banging away.
Yeah, and I really appreciate it. I think that I have, I have an uncomfortable sensation, but you've given me a lot of good logical points to think about and I thank you for that.
Thank you. No, I wanted to hear from you.
Do you want to do some more thinking or?
I'm, I'm good.
Thank you very much.
And Richard is, I agree with Richard that we've come a long way and we've, we've really covered a lot of issues and there are some i's and t's to take care of, but.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll, so thank you. Oh, we agreed to close now.
Just one question. There, there is bicycle parking on the plan, except it's for the residents, I presume, because it's in the building.
Yeah.
So just when you're thinking.
Thank you for raising, thank you for raising a question.
Where you.
Which is your want.
Okay.
Okay, guys.
Just stated.
Guys, I want to move on now. We're going to, we're closed. Thanks. Next item on the agenda.
They're in the building for the residents.
Is 16 Hawthorne Street. On this one, Mr. McCree is sitting in for me.
We're going to get.
Nick?
Yes.
Okay. So who speaks for Hawthorne Street?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. Casey O'Donnell for the applicant. If the commission has no objection, I've invited Victoria to come and mirror the presentation that I'll make to you, so the public can see it clearly. I know we have some community members here that are interested in the application, so we brought a duplicate of our application materials and I'd just like to step back so Victoria can see what page I'm on and I'll prompt her and then also the audience can see.
Good idea. You folks sitting over here may want to move over there to sit a better look if you want.
Currently, let the record show that the display shows the zoning location survey with the new proposed development. We reconfigured the site in accordance with the recommendations that we heard at the public meeting and from this commission. We also held a community engagement meeting on February 4th. The neighbors were very gracious and came out to State Line Deli and met with us and we paid attention to what they said and we paid attention to what instructions you gave us as well. We have reconfigured the site into two separate buildings, one containing a two unit and one containing three units. The two unit building is 4,907 square feet of floor area. The three unit building is 7348 in floor area. Total is 12,291. We adjusted the coverage a little bit. It is now 23.2% where 30% is allowed, that's building coverage. We were able to reduce the total site coverage to 45% where 50% is allowed. We attempted to improve the streetscape and the human scale by, as was the strongest suggestion we heard in the evening and at our community engagement meeting, by separating three units from two units and having two buildings and by making some significant changes to both our landscape plan as well as the site plan where we've adjusted the driveway location. So, well, let me start by showing you the landscape plan and responding to some of your So as you can see, our landscape plan has nine shade trees that are across the front along the streetscape. There is an additional 10 bushes that are three, four feet high. We total, we have a total of 24 trees that at time of planting will be at least two-inch calipers, so approximately eight to 10 feet tall. There's 111 bushes that are approximately five feet tall or plantings and then 130 bushes that are one to two feet tall. In total, we have 1,176 plants. We think that, again, that the mixture of shade trees and evergreen trees for screening is nice. And again, I'd really like to respond to your questions and to hear the public's input.
Comments, anybody?
The property, I don't, I don't recall it being surrounded on all three sides by a retaining wall. And there wasn't any information on the drawings regarding the height of that wall and so forth. So I realize this is a preliminary, but is that wall at any point an excessively high wall or is it just a couple of feet?
Tony DeAndrea, the site engineer. What I did, Mr. Maitland, was we put a note on the side that none of the walls would be more than three feet high and I, while we did push this out in a fairly fast manner that week to get you to take another look at it, I have taken the time since then to show that the wall is basically not more than three feet high anywhere. In some places, it's just meeting existing ground. I can just go through these quickly. In the northeast corner, excuse me, northwest corner is 107, top of wall, existing ground is 106. As we move to the middle of the western side, I'm hitting existing grade. And in the south side, same thing, we're hitting existing grade, but we have to retain some of that soil on the higher ground because we have to grade down toward the detention and bioretention basin. So that shows on the plan, 109, 108, 107, 106, moving in a clockwise direction around the back of the units 45. And on the westerly side, same thing happens. In the north, in the southeast corner, we have existing ground, 105, top of the wall is 108. And again, it's to accommodate the grading on the adjacent property, which is the access way to the rear lot. And we have to do that because right now there's a knob of ledge in order to put the park in there, we're cutting it down. So nowhere is there a wall more than three feet high.
As long as you're here, there was some discussion yesterday regarding ledge removal and its effect on underground water. Now, I know that there's a state law regarding surface runoff. You can't increase it to your neighbors.
Right.
Is there any other, is there any state law about removal of rock and?
No, there's no law against that, but there's, the only other concern you would always have is you can't divert water, so you don't want to divert water from one watershed to the other. But in this case, what we're doing in response to those concerns that were expressed at the last hearing, we're proposing to have foundations on these two buildings, basements. And today, if anybody was out there, I have some photographs to show you what it looks like today. You saw, if you did go out recently, you saw that there was an excavation where the original house had been. That was about three and a half to four feet deep in some places. On the eastern end of it, there was a little pocket of water from our rain last week. But it shows you that the water does percolate down through the soil and that's key to our design for our drainage system. But what we're doing by digging down in the foundations is we're going to draw the water that may be in the ground toward our foundation. And I have on the plan in the northeast corner, between the two buildings, a sump pump. So any water that comes into the underslab drain will be pushed out into the storm drain in the, in the street.
You will have under floors?
Yes, sir, absolutely. Yeah, underslab, we always have an underslab drain. Yes, sir. Always do that.
Always.
Yeah, in my designs we do anyway. But what I wanted to show by the photographs is that when you look to the, toward Rockland Place, the topography drops down about 20 feet or more from the edge of our property down to the bottom of Rockland Place. When you look toward Mr. Vennington's property, he's level and we're going to be, our foundation will be lower by a few feet than his ground. So any water that might come onto his property, if it could get through the rock, will end up around the foundation and be pumped out. So there's absolutely no reason to be concerned that anything done on this property will in any way divert water to someone else's foundation.
I'm concerned when you use the word sump pump. I didn't think that was permitted for.
No, it definitely is. What we've done here carefully also is though, we've set the buildings up high as we can to minimize the amount of excavation and to also stay above the groundwater. So the elevation out in the excavation right now by my estimation was around 103, just estimating today. And that puts us at the foundation slab finished at about 100 based on our design. So we have virtually no water to contend with and by evidence today, you saw that there was no groundwater sitting and we had heavy rains last week. So I'm confident that we have very little groundwater to contend with and if we do have some, we have the sump pump to discharge.
Do you have an emergency generator on the site?
Right now, there is no emergency generator because it's difficult to find a spot that complies with setbacks. But that's not to say that we won't find one. But right now, there is no generator.
It's good that you're looking for one.
Yes, sir.
At least that would resolve the sump pump issue.
We would like to have it. We're going to keep looking. But right now, we've taken the generator off the plan.
I compliment you on your design. I think you did listen and I think you responded in a very innovative way to.
I think it was, it was a good, it was a good plan, but this is a better plan and we have a great architect.
We got it, we, we were good, better, now we can get a best plan if we give you some more direction.
Any comments from the commission?
I, yes.
Please.
I have just a couple of questions. Mr. DeAndrea, I went out there today and looked at the front, but I also looked at the back because I had a concern about this paved area.
Mm-hmm.
And that, there's a kind of triangular shape back there, I would describe it as, in front of this, it drops the property. And that, I would say clearly, part of it's paved. Your neighbor has a trailer of some kind sitting on the property, on the grass, the grass, I'm guessing has been maintained by them. The house right at the very back.
Storage shed?
The storage shed I didn't find.
No, on the other, I don't know where you're referring to. I have a photograph looking toward that site and right now, there's nothing that I'm aware of on our property.
I drove to the, I drove up that steep.
You came up Rockland Place here, which is in this lower photo.
In that photo, yes.
Then you would have been looking, if you stood on our property, this is the remaining sidewalk of, you know, the original sidewalk, and you're looking toward the property referring to where the.
I went, the bottom left photograph is approximately, you know, a little further forward is where I was. And looking to the left, thus to the back of the property, there's a triangular piece.
Of pavement.
There's pavement and then there's grass, which is on a higher level.
Yes.
All rest of the property and.
Correct.
They have a trailer on that corner, they have things.
Yeah.
It looks like, you know, it looks very much like an adverse use. And I asked about it the last time, I'm sorry to be repetitious, but it reinforced my concern.
It's, it's a great concern and the reason that the trailer remains is because we have a continued agreement with that neighbor and there's no need for us to ask them to move it yet, so we've agreed to allow them to continue to store it there. I'm making that as a representation. I feel very comfortable with it.
So what you're saying is there, it's a permitted use, not an adverse use.
Correct. It's by license. We've given them permission to continue their use of that area. It was by license prior to this and, and there's, it's a good relationship. There's been no, we've had this conversation with the neighbor, excuse me.
Are you going to maintain it during this planning or is it going to be removed when this plan goes into effect?
No, when the plan goes into effect, we are going to ask them to remove the trailer and we anticipate that they'll agree.
And I was also frankly, based upon Mr. DeAndrea's drawings, I expected not to be able to see the rock at the right-hand side facing, when I'm looking through the property from the front of the property. And what I, what I was surprised to see was, I mean, a long stretch of exposed ledge. That's five feet or so above the ground. And that looks like quite a lot of rock to remove for.
Is that, is that a concern that you would rather see the ledge removed or you wanted to stay?
I'm just asking what, what the plan is for both ledges.
What we did on the, on the, which will be the northeast corner, as it turns out, on the, along Hawthorne Street, we tried to maintain those grades. We created a high point directly behind unit two and then it grades down. So there'd be a removal of some of that surface ledge in order to drain toward our rain garden number one.
And what's.
A minimal amount of removal.
What's your, what's the expected method of removal?
And speaking with the owners of the property today, and you can see also on the, on the original topography plan, there was a retaining wall that held that material up. So the idea is that they want to hammer out the knobs. When you went there to the site today, you probably saw some of those cracks and fissures in the rock.
Exactly.
Okay, well, there are some seams.
On the front.
The indication was the way the, the old house had been built, it was built between two ledge outcroppings.
I noticed that for sure.
Out of convenience.
Yep.
So they didn't have to remove rock.
Yes.
But it showed that there was a seam of dirt, you know, soil that could move, you know, from west to east through the site. So our intent was to keep that pattern going. So on that northeast corner, we intend to take off the top, hammer it, eliminate that retaining wall that was holding up some of the dirt around the front of the house and just let it grade down to rain garden number one.
So hammer your.
Hammering is the ideal. Keep in mind that hammering is, seems to be more accommodating to the neighbors.
Yes.
It's a much longer duration and a lot more noise.
Right. Right.
And so the way we've looked at this, we know that we have soil on the western side based on our test pits.
Yes.
We know now, based on where the house was, that we have a pretty good seam and majority of it where the house will go between the two ledge formations. So now we're more confident that we have minimal amount of rock to be moved now that the house is down.
And the left, I mean, parking, right?
The left side, now where the parking is, that knob has to come down, and right now, it's up to around 112, but it's got to go down to around, hold with me for a minute, I can't remember the number. We have to take it down to around 100 to get the water out in accordance with the drainage management.
Right, so how's that coming out?
Going to hammer it, make some noise. That's what they've told me today.
Okay.
Is there another way to do it? Yes. Is it shorter duration? Yes. Is it less expensive? Yes.
Well, I also, is it more damage potential to the neighbors?
Very little damage potential to neighbors.
The architect on the redesign, I mean, it's a huge improvement. Great.
For the record, we have to give that credit to Mr. Tim Peck. Any other comments from the commission? Any other comments?
Just a quick question for Mr. O'Donnell. Was the discussion with the neighbors, did that include the rock removal? Did you discuss that with them? Did they understand what was going to be happening?
We did discuss it with them, and we, essentially, our engineer has, I think, that was the same discussion we had, is that if we remove it with an excavator and a hydraulic hammer, it's longer duration, and if we blast, it's shorter duration.
Okay. What was their feedback to that?
You know what, I think there's enough here that can represent that, but I don't think there was a final agreement. My guess is they're going to prefer a hydraulic hammer and just have a slightly longer duration. Of course, you know that when you blast, you do a pre-blast survey, you're bonded, and it's very tightly regulated. So while I still advocate for that, I think that'll be something that they develop between the neighbors as we go to development.
Okay, Mr. MacRae?
Yes.
Anybody else? The public, anybody from the public would like to speak, please?
Would you slide in and out?
Would you come up, please? Would you help her with the microphone? Help her with the microphone.
Going in and out?
What's your name, please?
My name's Lucy Carino, I'm a neighbor.
Did you get the name, ma'am?
No, I didn't.
Carino, C-A-R-I-N-O. Will, will the traffic be going in Hawthorne and out the other end, or it'll be two ways, both ways?
It was Lucy Carino.
There's only one entrance to the site, it's on Hawthorne, so all traffic will enter and exit on Hawthorne Street South on the single driveway.
Okay. Who else would like to speak? Anybody else?
I'm assuming, build the rear house and work your way out.
The question from Mr. Fox was how, in terms of construction phasing, if we would start with the two unit to the rear of the property and build out to the three unit to the front of the property. I anticipate that will be true, but ultimately, for construction phasing purposes, typically drainage and foundation excavation happens at the same time. So I think ultimately what we're going to see is we're going to see site excavation and the installation of the drainage and the foundation pits, then the foundations will be poured, and it'll, the work will primarily progress simultaneously on both units, and the same will be true as framing.
Are you modularizing these, or stick framing?
We're, I mean, our current strategy is stick build.
Ben DiMarco again, I'm speaking for myself, not as a communications director for the Pembroke-Clemville Association. I actually live one street parallel to Hawthorne Street, I live on Arthur Street. So I'm very familiar with the area, familiar with the issues, parking issues on the street, which were major for many people, I'm sure, even at the first hearing here. We all know that this, that there's approximately 20 residences on that street now, and this would add five, so 20% uptick. People are a little bit concerned about that, and not so much people, really talking about cars. Okay, so potentially, it would add, it would add five units, potentially 20 more residents, potentially 18 to 20 cars. They've done a wonderful job of putting the parking on site, but there are now bus stops on both, bus pickups on both ends of that street. So children walk on the street to get to the bus stop, they wait on the street, waiting for the, waiting for the buses to come. So as it is, well, let me say this, a sidewalk on that street would not only provide safety for children walking to the bus stops and waiting for the buses, but it also would provide relief for people who actually drive their children to those bus stops, so creating much less traffic. It would also provide safety for commuters, possibly who would live in these properties, in the new properties, and maybe some that already live there now, to be able to get to the post road, to walk to the post road to a bus stop. It would provide potentially a much safer route for people from that street and people from Almyra Drive, maybe even Moser Street, who would come and walk down that street and be able to make their way down into Lower Pembroke and to the park. So there's lots of reasons why a sidewalk would make sense there. So as it is within the authority of this commission, I request that you seek a determination from DPW as to whether that street is suitable for a sidewalk, and if so, that you consider conditioning this approval for funding or construction of the sidewalk along the frontage of that property, the new developed property. Okay? Thank you very much.
We will note that. Also, Mr. Luca, include that in the, as part of the Pembroke study, which is now underway. Okay? Okay, who else would like to speak? Okay?
Good evening, members of the commission. My name is Judson Venningham, I'm one of the adjacent property owners.
He is Victor A.N., Kepal I.N.G.E.N.
I applaud Mr. Casey's efforts on the behalf of the neighborhood. He's done a pretty good job of trying to assuage some of the fears that we all have in the neighborhood of the size of this project. It is 15 bedrooms. Yes, it's five units, it's three bedrooms per unit. That's, if I count correctly, required 22 parking spaces and the potential for 22 cars on a street that currently only has roughly 18 legal parking spaces. This unit is way outsized for the neighborhood. There is nothing that even resembles the density and the size, both bedroom-wise of the units and the lot coverage, which I applaud the landscaping plan. It's beautifully done. I question as to whether it's financial, I mean, its final execution will ever occur, given the amount of rock that is on the site. As far as I know, you can't grow trees on rock. So I think a substantial amount of rock on both sides of the property would have to be removed, much more so than is being represented, in order to be able to even get enough dirt to get plants to grow. So I fear what the alternative would be, which would be fences. The drainage issues are being addressed by Mr. DeAndrea and the town, I'm sure are very competent. I, again, am concerned about the direction of which way the water is actually going to flow, because a great deal of the rock that is on this property is also on my property. So am I going to have giant cuts in a wall? My property is fairly high compared to where the final layer of this land is going to be. So is there going to be rock removed right up to the property line and then a drop-off? Or how is that going to be treated? And are we going to dig down the required, I'm told by landscapers, six to 10 feet below the level of the land for a root structure to be able to grab hold for the trees that are shown on the landscaping? I would also ask, I think the idea of a sidewalk is phenomenal, primarily for pedestrian safety. This roadway has become quite a thoroughfare for people trying to get around the office park traffic, particularly in the later parts of the afternoon when kids come home from school, to get over onto Almyra Drive. I would also, and I think most of the neighbors would probably agree, and I'm sure would sign a petition to the fact, that as part and parcel to this, that speed bumps be put in going towards Pembroke to enhance the ability of traffic to not go down Pembroke to get out to Weaver Street, but instead take the shorter route out to Almyra. Again, I applaud the work of the commission here, and the fate of our neighborhood is in your hands. Thank you.
Thank you. Who else would like to speak?
Good evening. My name is Carol LaRusso, and I'm on the other side of the property being developed. I also, good evening, everyone. I also would like to say that Mr. Casey and the developers have really reached out to the community, had two meetings at my store. The first one, almost, at least 30, maybe 40 people attended. We were there for three or four hours. Everyone expressed their concerns and their overwhelming feelings about the size of this project. I want to speak to that a little bit. Every day, I drive down my driveway and I imagine these structures next to me, and I try to be very objective, and I try to feel what it will feel like to live in that home, having five more homes next door to me. And it's a little disturbing, and I think everyone feels that. We feel it by the, not that we're not welcoming people and would love new neighbors, but that many people in that small of a space, with all of that rock and all the trees that have to come down, it just feels unnatural. And I think that's where a lot of us come from, in seeing this, this much developed on this property. The parking, I don't know if it's enough parking for there, but it's a lot of parking. And the way the parking is laid out, it does address the spaces, I imagine, but it kind of, to me, creates a parking lot. And one of my other neighbors said, you know, it went from a, it still is like an apartment complex. And I think it does detract from our hominess on our block. So not saying that this isn't a much better situation, it is, and I really am impressed by how much they were able to change, but it still has the feel of different in our neighborhood, where we have two-family homes, single-family homes. Yes, maybe there are apartments and homes, or people are housing relatives or whatever, but they're homes. It doesn't, maybe some of them are rented like apartments, but they feel like homes. And I feel like this much on this property changes that. Even the properties at the end of the block, while they're massive, they're still two-unit homey-looking properties. And I think that, I think all of us, well, I can't speak for all of us, but many of us have expressed the feeling that two and two makes sense, and that would feel right. Maybe it's, there would be big buildings, but it would, each one would have their own parking, it wouldn't require a parking lot, it wouldn't, it wouldn't require a sideways building, you know. So I hate to say it this way, because like I said, I do appreciate all the efforts that were made to listen, but I still think that there is an angst about how much is going in there and everything that has to be done. The rock that Judd is speaking about on his side, I have a bigger one on my side, you saw that. And my question too, is they said they were going to chip it down, so what am I going to be left with? You know, is that going to be like a little tiny mountain in the middle of my driveway, and there's a tree right there, and how is that going to affect the tree? I mean, all of these things can be worked on, I'm sure, but, and I'm not quite sure, I often said at the meeting that the developers obviously have a plan to work with. You've given them regulations and sizes and how many, how much parking, how much space. But when you put the humanity on it, you know, just because you can do that, you know, just because you can fit these buildings on this lot, is that the right, should they do that? And because you can develop and make five homes and sell five homes and create five more residences for the town to collect taxes on and all that good stuff, should that happen? So I don't know what the answer is, but to me, it feels uncomfortable. I would personally rather see two and two, or one and two. And I know that doesn't make the developers happy, because that would cut probably back on their profits, but we have profits of our life, too. And I'm hoping that in all of this, that will be taken into consideration. Because I'm sure that the technical aspects, them not blasting is great, because it takes away a lot of the worry. The drainage, I hope someone will watch that very carefully, because I would hate to see any of the neighbors flooded because of this, and I'm sure no one would want that. The parking and the in and out, they have offered, I hope it's okay if I mention this, but the developers actually offered to put in the sidewalk on their part of the property. So if you rush and you get this done, you know, you can save some money there. They will actually put, at their expense, that sidewalk, which would make us all happy and safer. But one other thing, besides all of that emotional and personal interest, is I'm concerned about if there's enough space between where the cars are parked and where the homes are, knowing that people will park in front of their homes first, that's just human nature. You're not going to walk 20 feet to your house if you could park right in front of it. If there's some emergency, or a fire truck has to get through, or an ambulance, or someone has to get out in a rush, it doesn't seem that way to me, but I'm, I'm hoping that that is something that's been regulated and measured. So I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, I'm a neighbor, I live on a...
Lift up to my, that's it. That's okay.
David Fein, F-E-I-N. I live on Byram Terrace Drive, and I would just like to say that I agree very much with the last two speakers, and just, this thing looks way too big. It looks hideous. Way too big for that street. It's a very narrow street. It's too big. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I'd like to just start by addressing some of the density concerns. So I, the last time I was in front of this commission, I had created a little density list, and you had asked me to put it to a map. And I did that this afternoon, and Victoria helped me. So we'll hand that out today, and I have a few copies I can hand out to the public as well.
Just give it, we'll hand it out, just...
All right, let me give a grab to here for the neighbors. Okay. So what I did was I printed out the GIS map, and I went to work in the professor's office, and I just centered our property with a 100 to 1 scale, and I looked at the density on every property that showed on the GIS map. The properties that are marked with a letter are also in my density study, that's the separate eight and a half by 11 I handed you. Overall, I think if you look at Hawthorne Street specifically, there's 22 properties... Overall, I think if you look at Hawthorne Street specifically, there's twenty-two properties that have frontage on Hawthorne Street South. Of the twenty-two properties, seventeen or seventy-seven percent are two-family. There's four single-family dwellings, that's eighteen percent, and then there's actually three rear lots, so thirteen-point-six percent. The other thing that I found very interesting, and I honestly, I enjoyed this exercise quite a bit, was looking at the pattern of development that we talked so much about at the last hearing. And that was a concept that was difficult for me to grasp. And going through this exercise, I think I really just started to develop that sense of what you meant by a pattern of development. So, the pattern that I noticed here was large tracts of multifamily, so a lot of two-families with interspersed single-family and three- or four-family buildings. And I think that's that natural diversity of housing that we're looking to create in the Plan of Conservation and Development. And I think that if you look at the properties, the three properties immediately to our south, you actually have six units in a surprisingly similarly-sized tract of land. So again, our density is lower than virtually every property that is a two-family, taking exception to 11 Hawthorne Street South, which was developed in 1918, last. So that I hope this satisfies you in terms of the density. I'd be glad to answer any questions you have on that.
Okay. Any other comments?
Mr. O'Donnell, as you went through your study, did you actually come across a pattern of two and, say, possibly three-family residences but encumbered inside a single residential-type building? Were you finding actually multiple buildings on properties?
So, anytime I ha -- well, okay, so when there's two numbers, that is a number plus a number, that generally indicates that the property would have two buildings. So in the upper-left-hand corner, you'll see there's a one plus three, so that is two separate buildings. There is, letter I, is two separate single-families. You can see there's another one down, sort of three-quarters of the way down the page on your left is a one plus one. So there's a few interspersed, multiple-building developments, and again, generally just set in with either single or multifamily surrounding it.
Two-family.
Correct. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Anything else?
I think it's, when you actually drive in this neighborhood, it's a remarkably stable, quiet neighborhood.
Cohesive looking.
There's nothing about it that suggests density to you, such as we're watching happen on Millbank Avenue. So, although you can talk statistics, the reality for this neighborhood is it's remarkable, remarkably pastoral, and has a sense of a lot of green space. And so, when you are going to put five families where there was a one-family house, you know, there's no denying that this is a significant change, and I don't think there are -- are there any properties in this whole neighborhood housing five families?
Well, as a single lot, that I would say, from a zoning perspective, no, but from a development perspective, we can see some of those that I marked on my density list, where a property seems to have been developed with sort of a holistic plan, and the buildings are clustered. And of course, that did happen under our prior regulations, where two families were free from a special permit. So that development is markedly more intense. So we think our approach to this site allows a reasonable density, and I don't argue the fact that, you know, nineteen-forties bungalow, you know, two, five units of residential is a change. But I think that we could be missing something here, and that is, these are going to be five homes. These are five Greenwich residents, and I don't think that takes away from this neighborhood or this plan.
Anything else?
I'd just like to ask about the, along the street, did you notice how many of the residences' front door addresses the street?
Yes. So there is a mix. And again, I know most of the development is back in the two-family, no-special-permit days, but it's a mix. When I walk through this, you know, when I have traveled the neighborhood, I have definitely seen a significant number of properties. I did not take the time to mark those on the map, because I felt that the way that we addressed the site.
Address that question that we had raised.
Agreed. Is that, did you say, asked and answered?
Ms. Albuthood answered.
I think, you know, we've been trying to pay attention to what does it look like to the neighborhood from the street, and I think having some degree of success with that, because we're also here to try and plan for the neighborhood, for the town. So, is there anything you could see? So this looks like the side of a building. It doesn't look like the front of a building. The end of the three-unit one, and that's what I think Mr. Levy's addressing. The other one, obviously, is a two-unit, and it faces differently. But the question we've asked other applicants is simply, can you do anything to make that look more presentable to the street?
Right. And that can just be done with some very simple architectural language on the side of a building that shows that it's addressing the streets.
I don't disagree, and that's why respectfully, I would love for you to approve this preliminary site plan and send us to the Architectural Review Committee, so we can make those fine adjustments, and then come back to you with a final site plan with the ARC's comments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are we set to close, people?
There might be somebody else who must say something.
I think, oh, thank you.
I have two sort of comment questions. With respect to the neighborliness that I think you're talking about, that they did address that by splitting the buildings into two buildings, and certainly much better than it was before. And I can speak to you from my perspective, looking outside my window, at the properties that are on the corner of Almyra and Arthur, and Almyra and Weaver Street, which I call the Monopoly Hotels. There's four of them in a row. None of the entrances to those buildings face any one of those streets, any of those three streets. So I applaud you for bringing that up and trying to do something about it. That's one comment. But the other that came up, my questions, and I spoke to Casey about it, and I'm still not really sure how this all works. He just mentioned a minute ago about, or someone asked the question about multiple units on a single property. And so the question in my mind is, because there was some concern, my concern, there were several of the neighbors that had concerns about what happens after these properties are sold. Will there be an association that sort of controls what happens on that property? And if there were going to be an association with bylaws, does it really matter? Is it better to have an odd number, so that any voting that happens within the association members can be broken, not run into a stalemate, and that things can actually be controlled that way? I don't know if you have any thoughts or any jurisdiction over that sort of thing, but it is a concern. If they were two and two, or if they were, in other words, an even number, is that going to be more of a problem than in the future than if there was an odd number? So, two and two, yeah, everybody would love to see two and two facing, all the doors facing and all of that, but I'm just wondering, looking for guidance from this commission.
Condominium, did they describe them as condominium units? But to your point, that's outside of our jurisdiction. But I would expect that they would have some sort of internal association, just because it is being proposed as a condominium. Do you guys have anything else on that?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I think we'll close, people. Okay? Close. Thank you. Should we take a break?
You say you're okay.
Are you okay to, are you guys okay to continue?
Oh, I think somebody wanted to take a break.
Folks, ten-minute break.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, Chip Haslam from Johnson Haslam and Hoagman for the applicants at Millbrook Club. This is a, an application for preliminary site plan approval, and there's two parts to it, the west side and the east side, as you call. I think the thing that was holding up preliminary approval predominantly the last time was the fact that we hadn't gone to inland wetlands yet, and you felt procedurally that that needed to be done. So I'm happy to say that we have gone to inland wetlands. We did get approved in February, and I think on that issue, we can hopefully proceed. In addition, I want to tell you that we've been to ARC as well, and gotten some feedback from them. We've already working on changes to the plans, the architectural plans that they wanted us to make, but more importantly, for you folks, we got some feedback from them on landscaping, and, which is helpful to us in looking at the overall site plan. So I'll go into that in more detail when we get to the east side, but for now, I just want to address some issues that came up on the west side. I think there was really only one, and that was that, I think Attorney Raymer wanted us to provide you with a seating analysis of the entire campus over on the west side, which you may have already gotten from staff today, but if you didn't, I hand it out again. And I think that explains it fairly well. What Scott Kloster, who's with me tonight, he's the general manager, also indicated was, when we did the patio back in 2012, he bought, we bought all-new furniture for the patio. So he was able to figure out exactly what the seating was.
Chip, I didn't get a copy of the seating thing. Could you?
I'm sorry. Yeah, it's on your top of.
No. Only one copy?
Oh, it's here.
Oh, you passed it out? Oh, well.
Passed it out. Got it.
Thank you.
Well, we were on break, and you wanted us to figure that out?
No, I got it.
It's the same one I think you received today, but.
I didn't see it. Thank you.
So the first part above shows the analysis of each individual area of the club that's used, and how we intend to change the seating arrangements in each particular area. We added also, we indicated the Lakeview Room, which I don't think was orally referenced the last time. That's the formal room we have that we use for big events, like the Holly Ball, Governor's Cocktail Party, things of that nature. Otherwise, it's fairly sleepy, and I think there's a few diehards that still like to have formal dinner there on Friday and Saturday nights particularly. We usually have three or four tables that are used, and that's about it. And one of the things we're trying to accomplish with this plan is to make, as I said, more options for dining, and more, make them more contemporary, at least more akin to current lifestyles, and more casual dining, shall I say. So that's the idea behind the overall plan. We want to keep the formal dining room open and not close it on those evenings particularly, because there is still that sentimentality about that area.
They're becoming bigger drinkers there.
They are, they are. It's a generational thing, I think, so perhaps.
Now, is the patio described as the one that's in the front?
The patio is the one adjacent, which you approved 2012. Right. And that's shown below.
Right.
And that was approved at, I showed you, we have one-hundred-and-fifty-eight seats there.
Same thing.
We usually open it at about one-hundred-and-thirty-six. Down below, Scott indicated that we set it for one-hundred-and-thirty-six. People down at the bottom right, Mr. Maitland, maximum number is usually set for one-hundred-and-thirty-six. So we set the patio on most evenings that were open in the summertime for that number. Sometimes, again, for like the Memorial Day picnic, July Fourth picnic, things like that, it'll go up to the number that you approved, but typically, that's the number we're at. And you had approved, I think it was one-hundred-and-sixty-seven total seats in 2012. We don't use all those typically. So that's the patio use. There was a question, and also, as it relates to the main clubhouse use, there's an issue raised about whether we keep the main clubhouse open for other functions when the patio is open, and we do. So during the summertime, when there's good weather, we will suspend lunch and dining, lunch and dinner service in the main clubhouse, but we do occasionally have functions there. There's not a lot of them. They're not huge, and I think in part, that's because it's somewhat self-regulating. We have to be responsive to the corporation that owns the property. We have to be responsive to the association of which we're a member of, the Millbrook Association, and also to our membership, to make sure we don't overuse the property and make it difficult for our members to use it. So typically, we'll have about ten events during the course of the summertime that we'll have inside the clubhouse while there's dining out in the patio. And those will include quite often birthdays, bat mitzvahs, christenings, things of that nature, where people want to have both a little bit of privacy and maybe some air conditioning as well. So we do do that, but we limit that. And for instance, in the past two Julys, last July, we had no functions whatsoever in the main clubhouse while the patio was open. The prior July, we had one, and that had attendance of seventy people. Last August, we had no, I think, no use of the patio, and, I take that back, I'm sorry, we had two events. One in 2014 had forty people, and one in 2015, which had sixty people. So we don't use it a lot, and particularly during July and August, because those are relatively big months for the patio use, we try to keep it relatively inactive during those time periods because of the other uses. Also, we don't, like some of the clubs along the waterfront, we don't actively solicit or get solicited for use for large weddings, et cetera. Usually, if we have an event like that, it tend to be, it is always, either member-hosted or member-sponsored. The sole exception probably to all of that is, we do host the PTA Council in June. It tends to be in relatively early June, when the patio is not in great deal of use. That uses about one-hundred-and-twenty people. Sometimes it's actually on the patio, and sometimes it's inside. But we have a way of handling the traffic and parking, and it's not an issue typically. But our use generally is very limited in the inside when we have the patio open. So hopefully, that addresses the seating issues in the west side.
Any comments? Any comments from the public? Okay, we'll close.
Now, let's get to the.
Now we go to the east side.
Correct. With regard to the east side.
Just to announce it, it's the west, it's the east side paddle tennis renovations.
Correct. And just to address a couple of issues that were raised in the staff report during the briefing session. With regard to the lighting on the paddle tennis court, there was a comment made that these were never approved by P&amp;Z. When the paddle courts were originally approved in 1963, the sport was relatively new, and at that time, it wasn't considered a necessity to have lighting on paddle courts, but of course, now it's become kind of de rigueur to have them. So shortly thereafter, I think it's nineteen, mid-1970, the ZBA did approve a special exception to put the lights in, with the condition that they be turned off by ten o'clock, and we do honor that. And so they're always turned off at ten o'clock. In addition to that, in 2003, in connection with our getting a CO for the golf shop, there was a request made that we indicate that the paddle lights were in compliance with the lumens regulations of the town of Greenwich. We did that by adding baffles to the lights that hadn't been there before. We submitted that plan, and it was approved by Diane Fox and by Jim Maloney, and I gave a copy to Pat and Katie a few minutes ago, showing that that happened in 2003. So that was instant to a CO. So they are currently conforming. We know when we add the fourth court and bring in other lights, we're going to have to make sure that they're conforming, too. We have indication that they will be, but that'll be part of our landscape plan, our lumens plan, when we come back before you after going to ARC. With regard to the landscape plan, the big issue, I think, with ARC was they would like to see more planting in the parking lot. Right now, there's really very little. There's one kind of planter and a portion of the parking lot, and that's really it. It's very challenging to provide any planting in that lot. It is all mostly asphalt now, but we do have plantings around that, and as I indicated previously, we have an agreement with a neighbor to the east, where there's currently no screening, whereby we're jointly constructing a planting bed with a wall on his property in order to put in whatever screening he would like to put in to screen his property. He's the only person who owns property along that eastern boundary. And again, any successor owner of that property can do with it what they want to by way of screening. Attorney Raymer's request, I did submit a copy of that agreement to Katie and Pat, too, so executed agreement, so you have that.
I'm just curious, it's not shown anywhere on your plan.
No, because it's not on our property, but I can submit what he's got planned to you. I have a sketch of it.
That'd be good to have it, yeah.
We'll submit that before we come back to you. I think those were the big issues. We may have to lose, if we do put some trees into the parking lot, we may have to lose some spaces, and the handicapped spaces we will add by the paddle tennis ramp. So Tony's already put in two spaces.
The other one is, when you said lose some trees, that there seems to be a consensus that there's a thirty-inch oak right on. that there's a 30-inch oak right on the northeast corner of the parking lot.
I saw your comment on that, I wasn't sure which tree you were referring to, so, that stays.
Right down there.
Matt, could you move?
Northeast corner.
Matt Palp, the landscape architect.
It's an exist 30-inch oak, yep.
That tree stays.
It was shown to be removed by Mr. DeAndrea. He liked, he wanted some firewood.
Not anymore.
He was looking for some good firewood, but, okay, good.
He just represented that will stay. So when we come back to see you next, we may be, with some direction from A R C, looking to get some relief on the parking in order to do some more trees out there, if we can. It is very tight, and we're trying to balance the need for parking, landscaping, and traffic flow.
I'm sorry, A R C wouldn't give you the relief on parking.
I know. Give us the direction, should I say?
You're in the wrong.
Give us more direction, but they clearly would like to see us if, what we can do.
Well, yeah, but I, I think the parking on this, on the site is pretty tight, isn't it?
It's very tight, and we've got a couple of spots, we think we can add some planting, but we're still working on it.
I mean, you could certainly get some more along the, the southern edge of it there, and, and maybe where that little one-end dent is down in the corner, you could get some, because I see you have put some trees out in the island area.
This is conceptual right now, and it's really kind of looking at it as, in the best of all worlds, could we do this? And then Tony has to review it too, to make sure that everything still works by way of flow, but, Attorney Raymer.
So, when this is backed by 61 acres, I think, this, this side of the property...
Correct.
So then I have a lot of trouble understanding quite how compressed it has to be, and why it needs a variance, and why we can't do a few trees, and so on, and still maintain the parking. Could you just explain that to us?
Well, we could add trees on the property, generally speaking, in a lot of places. We have 61 acres to do that. The, the use, the active use by the families that belong to the club, it is kind of consolidated, there's no question about it, but that's actually one of the things that makes it a much more of a family club, because you don't, dad doesn't go off to the golf course, and mom attends, and the kids at the pool. We tend to see each other while we're there together, and it is very close. We also have neighbors around us, and we try to keep our activities as far away from them as we possibly can. Top five photographs are pictures in...
That's unreadable from here.
I'm sorry.
That's the reflections off of the film.
Can you, or just move it forward a little bit? That's it.
Walk and talk.
Okay, walk and talk. The top five photographs are pictures of the paddle courts before the current paddle hut was built in 1995. And as you can see, the, the courts are set back from the road at that point, and there's, there's nothing between the road and that. So when we built the paddle hut, which is shown below in the, the bottom three pictures in 1995, the idea was to put it on that side of the paddle hut, paddle courts, rather than the other side, to keep it away from the neighbors. And because what's separating the, the club is just Woodside Drive, and it really is an internal private road that we all use, we felt it was better to keep everything together, and so did the zoning board of appeals in 1995. We still feel that way, rather than pushing it towards the neighbors on Morningside, to keep the activities closer to the internal aspects of the campus.
You do actually have the room, I mean, you're reorienting the paddle courts, you're putting in a new paddle building, so it just seems hard to understand why you can't throw a few feet at this end.
It's very tight, and as Tony was saying to you, we actually, we configured the lot, we're pushing out as far as we can at the property line with the fence, hence the agreement with Mr. Downs too, is what we're doing over there. But to make sure that, we're trying to make the, the spaces conforming in the future, where they're really, a lot of them are not now, and also make the flow better, so that we meet the requirements of the regulations too. So it is extremely tight. But by putting the paddle hut within the middle of the courts, and putting the courts on the outside, we kind of keep the activities pretty well contained, and again, keep it part of the overall Millbrook campus, and not push out towards our neighbors on the other side. So that's the intent of it.
Thank you.
Any questions of Mr. DeAndrea, Mr. Palp?
Anybody?
Mr. Kloster?
Anybody? Okay, any comments from the public? Okay, we're closed, thank you.
Thank you.
Since we've had postponements on overlook, and we've had postponement on steamboats, so now we're in River Road development.
Something, something. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, yeah.
I don't know. Sending it to you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. For the record, Tom Hegney, on behalf of the applicant. We are very pleased to be here this evening to share with you the proposed development for the Row America Greenwich facility on River Road and Cos Cob Harbor. This is not the first facility that Row America has developed, and there's actually a facility in Westport on the Sawgetuck River that has existed for some 15 years. There are a number of residents from Greenwich that go there. There's also a facility in Rye that Row America operates, that Greenwich residents also visit and, and are participating in. And what we're looking to do with this project is to provide a, a really world-class facility for people interested in rowing, and, and young people who are interested in getting involved, so that we can provide that same quality program that exists in, in Westport and, and Rye here in Greenwich. This property, as you will recall from our last, a few hearings last year, had a marina on it, Albin Marine was there, there was a Fjord Fisheries store in one of the buildings, and it had been a long time, I would describe it as a boatyard. And it had a number of uses. Fjord Fisheries ran tours from the, the piers on the property, brought in buses, and ran boats going down to, to Manhattan. All that has been discontinued. When we came to you back in the summer of last year, we were looking to establish this as a rowing club, and our special permit application at the time, which you granted, was to establish it as a rowing club under Use Group Seven. The subsequent phases that we wanted to do were to rehabilitate the buildings that were there and use them while we go through this process with you for a new building. What we found was that the buildings were in such poor condition that they could not be renovated very easily to use even on an interim basis. So those buildings have all been removed now, you may have noticed that as you drive down River Road. And we came in with a, a plan to have a tent for shelter for people who are rowing in the fall, that you granted in November, and we also had a, a storage container there at the time. So instead of pursuing something on an interim basis, we've brought to you what we really believe is, is a, the type of quality facility that people who are involved in rowing in Greenwich are looking for and, and frankly deserve. What it involves is looking at the whole, that we have lockers, and we have lavatory facilities, that we have a, a retail store for merchandise, safety equipment, along with the boats themselves, that people will be using on the water, that we have offices for the coaches, who will be out on the water with the rowers, particularly with the juniors who are coming from the Greenwich school system. We also have a exercise area and a multipurpose room for meetings of groups of the children and adults, either after regatta that they've had elsewhere, or as part of lessons and instruction on safety. So when you look at the, the building as a whole, you're looking at, at a, a unit that is needed in order to provide the type of facility for a, a, an impressive rowing, rowing club. Part of the facility also includes the, the storage of boats inside. So I, I know a question came up on how, how do we compute the parking? And the way I computed the parking was, I just, I deducted the storage area for the boats, I deducted the area that's being used for the ERGs or the rowing equipment, because that's being counted separately, and the rest I took as one space for every 250 square feet, because that is, there's no specific club use within our, our parking requirements. I, I didn't break it down as office space, because we're not renting out office space. These, this is office space that's needed as part of having space for the coaches and the people that they may mentor as part of the program.
The second floor is, is really designed as an office. I mean, there, there's, I mean, there's a large conference room, I mean, there are eight offices defined as an office.
Right.
There's a showroom, I, or sales room, or whatever.
And, and that's for boating equipment and, and boats themselves, that we want to be able to display, because that's part of our...
All of the functions on the second floor, I'm trying to get to, is that they, they certainly are not for parking. Would be in the, they'd either be a retail or an, an office use, which would be a completely different number.
My, my point in describing how the facility has been developed, though, is this, this is not, we're, we're not coming to you with a retail building, we're not coming to you with an office building, we're coming to you with...
But you have those uses in the building.
But I don't think you break it down that way, because it's all part of the rowing club, and it's all part of what's necessary to provide the services that you need for a rowing club. There are coaches that will need offices. So it's not that we're renting office space out, we don't propose to rent any of this out, this is all to be used as part of that program, same with the retail.
But if someone's going to use it, if a coach is going to use it as an office, then he still would be creating a parking demand.
And we've taken that into account in, in our parking numbers, and one of the advantages, I think, we had was, Mike Galante, our traffic consultant from Frederick B. Clark and Associates, is very familiar with the Sawgetuck facility, and was able to draw on a lot of what goes on there, because the program is similar to what is being run in Westport.
But the floor space isn't. They run that entire program on one floor, that's no, not as big as one floor of this, and they have a restaurant on the second floor, is that not correct?
I, I don't believe so. Howard, do you want to describe the area of the Westport? This is Howard Winklevoss from Row, Row America.
Yes, Howard Winklevoss. Are you asking about the size of the Sawgetuck Club?
The, I, I have some familiarity with it, and as I understand it, the top floor is entirely a restaurant, right?
No, no, no. The top floor is a, is a fitness center, like a, like a gym. That, that activity, we will not have in Greenwich. It does have a restaurant that seats about 40 people.
Right, on that floor too.
On that floor, on the second floor, yes.
Exactly. So that, that top floor is not devoted to the rowing establishment at all, right?
The, the, the juniors do use the, the fitness on occasion, but basically, no, it's, it's for...
So that facility's entirely on the lower floor, so you're, you've got apples and oranges here, as far as, I think, account for parking is concerned.
Well, I'd just like to say one thing if I could. The, the Row America activity, we, we have seven clubs altogether, and we have, you know, a relationship with U S Rowing to build another dozen or so clubs. We've been sort of appointed by them as, as ambassadors of the sport to go out and build these clubs. And one of the things that, one of the things that this club will do, will be mentoring coaches that go out to the, to the, to, to the clubs that we build. A coach may only come on board for two or three weeks, or maybe two or three months, but it, it will be a mentoring activity. So we, so these offices, you know, will be used by both the coaches and the coaches we bring in, and, and the, there's two people that run the Row America clubs, Dave Dickinson, who was actually at our last meeting, I wasn't able to attend, and Susan Schmidt. But, so there is activity, water-dependent activity going on at the club that goes a little bit beyond just kids and adults rowing, and that is the development of, in fact, we have a letter from U S Rowing saying that they, they believe this could be an Olympic Training Center, which we think we can do. The Sawgetuck Rowing Club, by the way, even though Philadelphia and Boston are sort of centers for rowing in the United States, Sawgetuck has actually bypassed them in five, you know, in five short years. Our masters are some of the best in the country, won five out of the last seven years national titles, and our junior girls, if you can believe this, both the lightweights and the regular girls, won national titles last year, and then the girls went to the head of the Charles, you know, 20-minute grueling race, set the course record in a head, in a head win. I mean, we are dedicated to competitive rowing that goes beyond Sawgetuck, beyond Rye, beyond Greenwich. But Greenwich would be the, would be the home base of all this activity, and people will come from around the United States to, to look at our club, how'd you do it? What'd you do right? What'd you do wrong? And we made a lot of mistakes up at Sawgetuck, I don't, I think we correct a lot of those here. One of the things that the Z B A asked us to do, because we had to build a large building, was not acceptable at that, on that property, they said, please, Howard, make it as small as you can possibly stand to make it. So we have five people in one office the size of a, of one office in Sawgetuck. I mean, I did exactly what they said. We can't, if you came in for, for lunch, you, there's no place to hang your coat. I mean, we have no place to store anything, I mean, it's, it's crazy. This, this club is more comfortable in that regard, and, and we think that's the right thing to do. We are not opening up a corporate office. These offices are for our, our people, our coaches and our Row America club officials, so, take my word for that, if you would, please. Maybe, maybe the parking still has to be calibrated on a different formula, I'm not an expert on that, but we have, just one last point if I could. We have 66 parking spots at Sawgetuck. Sawgetuck has a restaurant, which we're not, which we don't have here, and Sawgetuck has a fitness center with many machines and so forth, which we're, we're not having here. We called the room, I think, the fitness room, and I think maybe that, that was a mistake, we should have just called it training room, because it's where, on inclement weather days, the kids and adults will be in that room, and during the winter, they would be in that room. But that, that, that room is not filled with, you know, machines of a typical gym. Thank you.
The, the problem that, that at least I have with that is that the space allocated for the ERG machines is, is quote excessive, and would lead to the introduction of other training equipment into that space. It's, it's, there's 16 machines in that room.
Well...
And having seen them for, as you know, probably, there was another rowing club that had a plan on this site, and they had 42 ERG machines in, in their facility, as opposed to the 16 you're having. And then they, but that was in a pretty contained room, and there wasn't a lot of space around it. And in this case, it's, it's quite the opposite, it's a large room with few machines. So there's, there's either, something's going to be going on in there, I, it's, it's, this facility will be used in some way, and I do believe that in the training and for rowing and so forth, you do use other machines, other than just the ERG machines for, for the program.
Well, I'm not familiar with those machines, but I will say that the activities involved, and I'm not a coach, so I observe what happens, but there's, there are more activities in ERGing. There's rope jumping, there's, what do they call, jumping up and down on a box, there's kettlebells, some light weightlifting, not machines per se, but...
No, I understand, but there are...
Apparatuses, apparatuses that are used to train the kids, that's right.
And, and we, we have a different formula, I mean, it's all coming down to parking and so forth, but I, I mean, I know within the other programs, and, and you've just, you confirmed it, that there are these other fitness functions, and so there's going to be more than 16 people in that room at any one time.
I'd just like to say with regard to parking, I mean, Sawgetuck has 66 parking spots and a much bigger, I mean, we have, you know, 500 adults and 200 kids, although we stagger the kids, and it's three to six, and six to nine, and all that sort of thing, but the, the parking here is relative to what we... But the parking here is, relative to what we're going to do, and what I know we've done for 15 years at Sagatuck and what we've done at Rye, is very generous. And the kids don't use parking. They're car-pulled. And most of the kids are underage, so they can't drive. So, the mothers take turns bringing the kids in. And with regard to adults, we would have up to 30 adults there at one time. But we can't handle 60 adults. We can't, we don't have, we're not going to have that many coaches, too. We couldn't afford to do that. So, we presented that information, I think, previously to you in the fall.
Well, anything you presented to us in the fall, we would not have been considering this kind of a facility.
I understand.
What we considered in the fall was just a stop-gap facility to get you...
I understand.
I do want to follow up on that, just in a moment.
On the question of the uses and stuff, because the showroom is for sales?
It's, our organization sells boats. I mean, WinTech Racing, it's for boat sales, so just small boats. But in that showroom, boats are Kevlar, fiberglass and/or carbon fiber, so the different types of boats. We sell racks.
Just, no problem with the fact that you've got sales?
Oh, yeah.
But just trying to put together the conference room and the two conference rooms and the two kitchens. It seemed like you've got the sales area, then you've got these two conference rooms, you've got some offices, and you've got the two kitchens. It doesn't look like that's for coaches as much as we were puzzled.
Okay. I totally understand.
Selling the boats is not a problem. It's for us to understand what you're really doing inside the building. It isn't that there's anything wrong with you selling boats. It's totally fine within the zone, but it's just how you're using the square footage in the building that we're struggling with.
Okay, so, let me try to help out there. The conference room looks excessive. And you would say, why is that so big?
Why are there two of them?
Well, okay, I'll explain. The large conference room is when we have our coaches in, directors and coaches in from our satellite rowing clubs. We had one just two weeks ago where we had, we had five times two, we had 10 people come in. And maybe the conference room is overly large right now, but when we have 15 or 20 clubs, we're going to be using that, you know, every couple of months to have our, to have these, you know, what's right with your club, what's wrong with your club. With regard to the other conference room, it's perfect for when you have an eight boat that you're videotaping, to have a room where you can bring the kids in and say, okay, let's see what you're doing right and what you're doing wrong. It's a wonderful little conference area for that. With regard to the offices, there will be coaches, coaches mentoring, the Row America clubs, two people there, and one person in sales for WinTech Racing. That's the boat sales, the dock sales, and the, I didn't mention that before, the dock sales and the rack sales. Was there another?
Go ahead. How many people was that at one time on that?
I counted 15 this afternoon when I added up. Let's see. Do you want me to try to go through?
If you could, do it again, yeah.
Okay, so, something like six to eight coaches.
I'll give you...
Two to three mentors, but they'll share.
I came up with 18.
Did you?
So, we're pretty close.
Yeah, okay. I mean, six to eight coaches. And look, this will take a while to build up. I'm talking about full tilt when we're...
But Howard, that will not be while you have, that will not be while you have juniors or adults out on the water.
Well, why not?
What will not be?
No, when you have all the coaches in a meeting.
Well, some of the coaches, they're coming from other places. The coaches are coming from other locations.
What I'm saying is, these are not going on all at the same time.
But the function is, what we need to do, I think, what we need to do is this, to try to come up with a parking for this use, for this building.
Right. That's what we're trying to figure out.
And the upper floor seems to me to fall into an office and a sales functional use, which are both uses defined in our parking regulations. That's what's going to be going on in that floor. There's nothing that you've said here today that would change my opinion, that that is under our parking regulations what's happening. Now...
But this isn't just a straight retail store. This is part of the overall presentation for the rowing club.
We seem to be hit recently with a lot of unusual retail uses in this town.
Is the retail open to the public?
Yeah. Yeah, they're going to sell boats to everybody, right?
We would like it to have it open to the public.
Sure, sure.
I don't know that there's going to be too many people who are non-rowers come in and buy a shirt, or, you know, a rowing outfit. But theoretically, we wouldn't, we would welcome it, people for Rye.
It is fine for the zone. We don't have a problem with it for the zone. We're just trying to come to what the parking is on this site. And it seems to me, I'll give you my calculation for what it's worth. I get, because of the uses on the second floor, I come up with plus or minus 43. On the first floor, I come up with 16 for the ERG machines. And now, the sort of kicker is I come up with 14 for the excess space around the ERG machines, just for these other functional uses that I know are going to happen. And that's based on what, we were troubled when we had this facility, a rowing facility here before us a couple of years ago. What do we, how do we attribute parking to a training room? We finally ended up, and it works out that we came up with about 40, we took the total number of machines that you could put into a room, we divided it all out, and we came up with approximately 40 square feet to be used for a parking calculation. In this case, that generates about 14 spaces. Two spaces on the first floor for the pro shop and the reception area, and that came up with 75.
I have a couple of comments. One is because Mike Galante was also familiar with the Sagatuck space, he was able to draw on that facility and its parking availability and the uses going on, which is, I think, what we're really dealing with here. How are these uses affecting the parking requirement? And found that the 66 spaces would be adequate. Beta, as your traffic consultant, also looked at that data and analyzed it. And they also came to the conclusion that the parking that we're providing here was adequate for the uses.
I didn't sense that in their memo. Did they say that directly in their memo? They talked about...
I believe they did.
Yeah, I guess they said that.
I believe they did.
But I forgot.
Both methods for estimating parking requirements are reasonable. And since 66 full-size parking spaces and three handicap spaces are shown on the plan, the parking provided should satisfy town requirements.
It doesn't.
It doesn't.
But I think they're looking at it from, does this in a practical way work? And I wanted to get back to where we introduced this last summer. And as part of the narrative that we submitted, we indicated phase one, phase two, phase three. And in phase three, the commission was looking for what are the number of children or juniors that are using the facility, and what are the adults, and when will they be there at any one given time? And what we indicated was that ultimately, we would have a total of 100 to 150 adults participating with 30 adult rowers at any given time. And that we would start out the junior program at 50 to 75 and have, as part of this phase, 200 rowers. In Sagatuck, there are 230 junior rowers that are broken down into various time periods.
What would prohibit you from having 60 adults there?
Just the availability of the boats and the coaches that will be with them. They don't just go out on the water by themselves.
I know. But you can get...
We got that, we got a primary...
I have a follow-up question on that particular piece because it's my understanding that people are there for one and a half hours, and they're replaced by another group for one and a half hours. And as we have, over the last couple of years, dealt with fitness places where there are group classes, we have had a very negative experience on the counts because there is actually an overlap. And we just had SoulCycle here wanting more, and in fact, it looks like it's an ongoing, right, an ongoing disaster, that's probably a perfectly good way to put it. And there, our expert talked about an 85% of the parking count being at capacity. Anything over that is not functional. So, your count here for the morning hours has me greatly concerned because you, your expert only doubles up at one hour, when practically speaking, that overlap's going to happen at every changeover. And we know it happens, so...
So, what I'd like to say is that the typical strenuous activity of a rowing practice is one hour. The half hour is getting ready and getting out of there. So, there is that built in. And we've been, we've been doing this at Sagatuck for 15 years. I mean, we know, we know it takes, if you just did the hour, you can't, you can't get them in the boat and get them off the property in an hour.
We're actually trying to get you to gap it because what we found is that we have...
We have.
Yeah, but we were concerned that it's not enough because you can't overflow from your parking lot into the surrounding street at 8:30 in the morning.
I totally understand that.
It's a crazy busy street at 8:30 in the morning.
Well, there is, there is no overflow. This site has to function on it.
It has to function on, we understand that.
So, what we're concerned about is when overlapping groups come in, and if you're, and if they don't put too much what Mrs. Reimer was just saying.
Totally understand. So, here's the deal. If, we'll gap it right now, if you like. We have no trouble with that 15, 20-minute gap. It's okay. We think we've got it gapped, but we're the last people that want to cause a problem at parking on this property.
Then I'm having trouble understanding the parking generation charts because it sounds like you have a group of people who comes in from 5:30 and they leave at 7:00, but you have a new group that comes in at 7:00. You say they need a half hour, they row for an hour, and they need a half hour...
15 minutes to get going and 15 minutes to get out of there.
And they got to get the boats, they got to get the boats in and everything. Now, are they in their cars and out the door within that hour and a half? That's what we're asking you.
Yeah, well, they are at Sagatuck, but if you want an explicit gap, we don't have a problem with that. We're happy to do that.
Kayden, as our resident rowing expert?
Yeah.
For me?
I'm in agreement with Mr. Winkelvoss.
Okay, so, you get to your rowing facility at 5:00, and you are out of there by 6:30?
Well, no, well, I mean, let me do it my way because I get there at 5:30.
Yes.
Sorry to make the adjustment.
Yes, that's fine, okay.
Yeah, and then, yeah, you're out, you're done.
You're on River Road at 7:00.
Yes.
The hour and a half has a building gap.
Yeah.
And we had to do that because if you had it...
For the same reason that we're expressing...
But I totally understand. I mean, SoulCycle, for example, you don't have the preparation and the ending. You just walk in and jump, and 40 people walk out of there. That's a problem.
They got to put on their cleats.
I think, I'd like to jump in on this.
Yes, sir.
When Mr. Winkelvoss started explaining things, I got a completely different picture than I got from the application. You've got, it's got two operations, which we certainly can check, in Greenwich, I mean, in Westport and in Sagatuck. And you want the Greenwich operation to be a central operation for your activity. And I think it's a different ballgame than what we're used to when we evaluate different things. You're not in the retail business, but it's a good idea to have a retail accommodation, which is what you're doing for kids who want these shirts and what have you.
And boats.
And it's all geared to safety. It's all high visibility, neon, yeah.
It's not meant to be a profitable retail business that...
I don't know about the profitability, but it's a safety, yeah.
What I mean in terms of generation. And certainly, what I'll call the training area, for another word, is not, this is not Equinox that you're putting in there in terms of being an activity. It's part of the total rowing experience, which obviously includes workouts and what have you at different times. So, I think I will look at this, and particularly with the parking recommendation by our professional. I don't contest any of this. I think we should examine this in a different posture and your professional...
We greatly appreciate that.
...I think the hours that parking comes in and think more expert on this than you do, particularly since we have our own guy who did the study. So, I congratulate you. I think this is a hell of a good thing for the town.
Well, thank you very much. And we have, we have been in the business for 15 years, and we love to see these kids do what they're doing. And as you know, my boys rowed at the Olympics, and we think there's a lot of Olympians in Greenwich. We just need to bring them ahead forward, and we will.
When you're at, when you're at full-blown, you know, a few years from now, how many kids do you think you'll have go through there?
Well, we, probably very much like Sagatuck, around 200. They have 230, but they're staggered. Like, in the winter, I mean, the girls come from 3:00 to 5:00, and the boys come from 5:00 to 7:00. I mean, we, and then Monday, Wednesday, Friday, Tuesday, Thursdays, Saturdays. I mean, it's, we break it up so that we don't have this 200 kids even showing up, even in carpooling at one time. And we know how to do this, and we've been doing it very successfully in Sagatuck for 15 years. And we would never put the kids at risk, never have cars backing up. I mean, Mr. DeAndrea has helped us design our parking entrance and exits so that we have, we have a flow of traffic, so they have aisles to go down. We have the kids all ready to go. There's no, the kids aren't milling around. They're standing there waiting for their mom or dad to pick them up in carpooling. And it's a very efficient operation. So, we have done it. We have the, we have the experience. You can't sound like a politician, don't you, the guy from Ohio? I've been there, I've done it, and we won't let you down. This will be, this will be a great, this will be a great rowing center.
So, put it in layman's terms. Every afternoon, how many kids show up? Girls, 3:00 to 5:00?
Well, during the season, during the rowing season, there would be, every day, there's a little over 100 kids show up every day.
So, you said that's in two shifts, so 50 and 50?
Well, not during the rowing season, during the winter. During the winter, we can do night practice because...
So, you're going to have 100?
Little over 100 competitive rowers.
Okay. And so, how many boats is that?
Well, if you divide, if they were all in eight boats, which would be a horrible thing to have to put them all in eight boats, but you can do the math on that. But what we like to do, the reason that the Sagatuck girls are so competitive is that we like to put them in smaller boats, four-person boats, even two-person boats if we can, high tide and, you know, it's good weather.
So, 25 boats?
I wouldn't think 25. I'm sorry, I, let's say, let's say, maybe, what's four into 100?
25.
There you go. See, you're a mathematician.
Well, I'm also...
I'm an actuary, by the way. I just can't do the math.
So, I'm involved with the boathouse next door. We spend a lot of time looking at how much space behind the storage or the garage for the boats, and where are you going to put 25 boats during this 15-minute changeover? I don't think, you know, they're focused on the plan. There was some discussion yesterday about moving the building closer to River Road. I don't know physically, and what I like to see from you is a layout of where you're doing all your setup. Because from my experience, you don't take the boats out of the water, put them all the way inside on the rack if another group's coming to take them out. And your docks maybe hold four or six boats in the water at one time. So, I'd like to see a layout of where all these boats are going during this switchover.
Well, the layout's pretty simple. We have 16 boats on the dock, just like the Water Club has. So, there'd be, on the dock, there'd be two racks of eight, so 16 eight-person boats.
Okay.
And then, on the, on the, on the ground, remember, there's, well, I, I'm sorry, I don't know that you've seen this, but there are two docks. There's one for the big boats, 200 feet of dock, and then one for the smaller boats. So, this...
I just want to see a layout.
Oh, well, I mean...
I'd want it verbal. I would like to see a piece of paper.
We can generate that. Be happy to do that.
Because the concern is, as you know, we have this walk that connects all the properties on River Road, and I want to make sure that there's enough area for pedestrians to walk while you're bringing the boats in and out. And so, I want to see demonstration of that.
So, what we would bring to you the next meeting is a graphic display of number of boats, number of juniors that would be assigned to each boat, and a timetable that would be associated with each of them using those.
That's a good comment, but don't forget this.
I think I understand what we need to provide to you.
The boathouse portion seems very small in relationship to the rest of the facility for that many boats. And so, how many... And so how many boats? I'd like to know how many boats you can store inside? How many are going to be stored outside? And what are you going to do? Because they're very expensive. I know during the winter, you don't want to store them outside.
In the winter, they'll be taken to another facility.
All of our boats from Sagatuck, Ry, and Greenwich would go to Bridgeport. We have a 50,000 square foot facility up there that we store them.
Just.
And that's where repairs are also done. We'll provide that kind of information to you as well. There were a few other things that did come up that I did want to touch on. We had comments from John Goucher from DEP on the wall right along the edge of the northeast corner, wanting us to eliminate that curb and bring the level spreader back. Representative from John Robert's office and I were on the phone with John Goucher today. And he's in agreement that if we do that, we can submit that back and he would be satisfied with the concern that he expressed. But we'll make that change on Mr. DeAndrea's plan and get that back to you.
For the commission's benefit, we did get an email from Mr. Goucher today stating the same, that they would be happy to accept the commission's decision to address this prior to permit if that's what they wish to do.
The walkway, the pedestrian walkway, has been pulled away from the water. And I'm just curious why you did that and got it off of the idea of being a boardwalk, which is what we have got on, trying to create that along the water.
We're trying to give it more of a curve rather than a jagged walk. So that's why, as it's outlined here in this light blue, it comes in, comes around. And this is a separate material that would be what's called Flexi-Pave. And actually, there was a concern about the material and whether it has any toxic leaching into the groundwater. And Flexi-Pave actually had an independent lab test that last year and received a report in April of 2015. I'll provide that to the staff, but they were very convincing that this is actually a pavement material that is used right near drinking water sources and works very well as a walking surface as we propose it here.
Mr. Hagney, in addition to the club that Mr. Fox was mentioning to the north, obviously you know about there's an existing rowing club to the south too. So what's happening with the relationship between all of these clubs? They all have kids that have been approved during the hours of 3:00 and 6:00, or 2:00 and 6:00. So what's happening on the harbor side, on the water side? In other words, how is all of that traffic being managed? Has there been conversations between the three clubs or what's happening in that regard?
I'll let Howard respond to that.
Jamie Coven, I'm sure you know Jamie Coven, Olympian from Greenwich, who now lives in Greenwich, has established the Greenwich Foundation, I think called maybe Greenwich Rowing Foundation, 501(c)(3) organization. And he is going to get us together. In fact, there's a meet and greet with the police, Marine Police tomorrow night, I believe, in the Harbor Commission. But we've reached out to Brunswick and the Water Club saying, look, we need to work together. And if we work together, all our kids are going to be safe. Norwalk River Rowing Association, which is a somewhat smaller venue, has three clubs on that river, as you well know. Large clubs too. Lusstron's club is only 50 kids, but the other two clubs are big. And they get along fine because they work, they go up the right side and come down the left side and no one, yeah. But Jamie's working on that. We're all over safety. I've had kids rowing for 15 years and nothing concerns me more than the safety of our kids. So we're going to work that out. We initially got kind of a cold shoulder from the Water Club, but we'll talk them into working with us. They've got to do that and for the benefit of their rowers.
So is the intent to create, I've heard various things over the years, but is the intent still at this point to have a buoyed line? And how would that impact the motorboat traffic?
Well, you can't have a buoyed line in the federal channel. What the intent is, we're working very hard to try to get a completely separate dredged channel for the rowers to go out and try to piggyback onto the dredging that'll happen next fall. And we think we have a wonderful wealthy gentleman that may fund that or we're all funded together. But if we can piggyback on that dredging, then we have a completely separate channel out to the wide water. If we don't have that, then we just have to go out on the right and back on the left and have coaches. All of our boats have two-way radios. All the coaches have, you know, radios in their launches. We're communicating with our rowers all the time. We would hope that the other clubs might adopt that policy as well, just for safety and be able to talk to one another as we go out there. There's plenty of water in Greenwich. Getting out there, particularly at low tide, is always an issue. And what we do at Sagatuck, sometimes at dead-low tide with a, you know, when the moon is whatever it is when it's dead-low, we don't row. We row that day or we do, we run or something like that. So.
So is there an organization like the Harbor Master or the Harbor Management Commission or the Coast Guard or the Greenwich Police? Or who's in charge of that in your mind in terms of the safety there? In other words, if there is no dredge, let's say, just for the sake of argument, and you do have this very narrow channel at times where you could have a lot of traffic in that narrow channel, is there, who's in control of saying there has to be one launch per boat, let's say? Or whatever the scenario is so that you can ensure the safety of everybody? I mean, this isn't a question directed just to you. This is more about, you know, because you have all these other clubs too. So it's not just your responsibility, but since you happen to be here.
Yeah. So Norwalk is, to my, to the best of my knowledge itself, they work together and they regulate themselves. I don't think there's an overriding body. Jamie Coven is trying to set up this foundation, and I think he'd be successful, to have a sort of, it's easier for the foundation to invite the three clubs to come together than. We tried that ourselves and got a little bit rebuffed because we're competitors. So Jamie's going to step in the shoes. But I think tomorrow night, there's a meeting with the Harbor Police and the Harbor Commission, the newly formed Harbor Commission. And there's, you know, maybe that's the venue where everybody says, okay, how are we going to work together? But we're very concerned about that and I'm sure the other clubs are too. So we'll work it out. But we have to work together on it, yeah.
As the orientation of the building, one of the goals of the WB zone is to, in fact, increase the visibility of the water for the public. And that would be from River Road. Was there ever any thought to turning the building 90 degrees? That you would increase more of the visibility of the water?
We looked at a number of different configurations. This seemed to work best in terms of the parking layout, the drainage and water quality as well and keeping the building the 30 feet away from the high-tide line that's required.
We'd like to just say that we care about that streetscape as well. And we've had our landscaping folks do studies as to if you're driving down River Road or walking down, will you see these cars that are parked along there? And the answer is, when the hedge gets to the five and a half, six-foot height, you won't see the cars, which is a good thing. Secondly, if you have a building that's pulled back from the road, then you have beautiful side views that you don't have if a building's pushed up. I remember the last submission that was proposed to this property, had the building turned and brought forward.
I'm talking about the building being turned 90 degrees instead of being this way.
I understand.
That way.
I understand.
Notwithstanding the screening of the parking and from River Road. But the view out to the water is completely different from a building turned 90 degrees as opposed to this one. This one gives great views of the water for the rowing club. But again, the WB zone has, one of its principal reasons is the public view of the water. And that's from River Road.
If I could respond to that a bit, we do have a whole clear panel where the boat storage exists so you can actually see right through the building itself. And that's an important feature of the design of the building, is to provide that look through the building. Similarly to what you have for the view through the building for the general rebuilding on Steamboat Road.
Well, the general rebuilding on Steamboat Road has a real opening.
Well, this is clear glass on both sides to see through the building.
Well, that's different. I mean, you might even be talking, I mean, a little closer if you said it was three sides of glass, but the fact of the matter is, that's different than open. I mean, it's because there's a roof over it, there's, you know, it's different.
Look, we're sensitive to your comments and I just wanted to point out that the Brunswick building is very close to the road, as you know. And this boat building is way close to the water. There's this huge gap between those two buildings that provides a beautiful, absolutely stunning view of the water. So we haven't locked out that view. And I don't know whether, I don't know whether our landscaping folks could, they're so clever, maybe they could kind of show that.
I don't think they can make it disappear with plants.
Well, no, but I don't think I'm articulating my case very well because there's a beautiful waterscape site from the sidewalk and the road. Because Brunswick's back and we're here, you get this huge gap.
But you know that there were two small buildings there. So there was a lot of water view there historically. So that discussion about reorienting this building 90 degrees, the Brunswick building is oriented front to back, lengthwise from the street down. It's now, you know, the frame is up, you can see what it's going to be. We just went through a WB tonight. I mean, Mr. Hagney and I have been listening to that one for a while. And they're going to have two buildings instead of three. And the whole focus of the discussion has been about the water view for the public.
When I stored my boat here, when it was Mackenzie Marine, it was one of the large white marshmallows sitting there. And when there were, I don't know, 80 or 90 boats there, there was no water view at all for seven months out of the year. Unfortunately, we don't get to use our boats 12 months out of the year here. And from middle of November until the end of April, that's where it sits. So, and I think you get that also from driving by the Water Club this time of year where the boats on the racks are looming over the sidewalk and the road. And that's what's there six months out of the year. I think that providing the public access and having it in an attractive manner and done in an architecturally pleasing way, I think is important and frankly, as important, if not more important, than views from the sidewalk along River Road.
Let me ask you a question, by the way. That may be a little naive. Did you mention the control of the project from the viewpoint of concern long-term? Is that under the, did you say Harbor Master's responsibility? I thought you said that, I'm not sure.
No, I think what Howard was referring to was the management of the waterways itself when you have various different uses. People rowing, people coming in on power boats, sailboats.
Basically, it would be under the control of the Parks Department.
It, I.
Am I right?
I think one of the things I think everyone's grappling with is that, yes, the Parks Department has a role, the Police Department has a role. Your Planning and Zoning Commission has a role.
On the water, we don't.
The Harbor Management Commission has a role.
I have no problem having confidence in the management today, but long-term, with a lot of kids, you know, 200 kids, I just know who makes sure that everything is going well. Who's in charge of that?
Well.
Could you help on that?
That would be, as far as our facility's concerned, that would be Row America.
I know, but you form a town.
The Harbor Management Commission, the chairman.
That's what I'm asking at.
Yeah, the Harbor Management Commission is a newly formed commission and they're working on their plan right now as to how the harbors will be managed. And that's part of what their plan is.
I just want to make sure with 200 kids that, you know, there's no potential problem long-term.
Right, and as I think that Mr. Winklevoss has represented, there's a group that is trying to get the three entities together. However, that group is not the enforcer, so to speak. They're not the ones in control. So I think the Harbor Management Commission is going to play a big role in that.
We better make sure of that, okay?
Right, and I think their plan, and that's what they're working through right now, they have, they've got a draft plan. And it's, like I said, it's still draft, but they're working through how all of these various pieces are going to fall together. As Mr. Hagney was just saying, there's the police, there's our.
I think it's a joint effort by a number of boards and departments in the town, including the Police Department and the Parks and Rec and.
I've got to check in tonight, that scares me. Somebody just said joint responsibility.
Yeah, the town is working towards joint cooperation of all departments, Mr. Chairman. It's just, it's a long-term effort.
I have some traffic and parking questions that are still concerning me.
Mr. Gaunt is here to answer any questions you might have regarding that.
That would be great. The report, I'm looking at our page 574, speaks to a detailed traffic study that was done in 2011. And I don't think that that's an adequate premise to operate on. It's five, that's five years old and that's concerning as a basis. I think River Road is a busy street that has absolutely no parking on it. It needs to work. So I think that would be my first thought. Your, our page 579 indicates that there would be 56 cars, sorry, 64 cars from 6:00 to 7:00 a.m., but not at any other timeframe in the a.m. And I would like to hear an explanation of that, if I may.
Mike Gaunt, Frederick Clark Associates, to the first question, using data from 2011.
Yes.
I've been doing traffic studies for a long time. If you go back in time before 2007, traffic data was good for two or three years. And traffic typically grew by 2%, 3% per year. And then we had 2007 with the economy changing everything. It hasn't quite bounced back yet. And if you look at traffic patterns in many cases, and we've looked at town-wide traffic volumes and traffic studies that state of Connecticut has done and we've done also for different projects, traffic decreased by 20% in some towns. New Canaan was 25% town-wide for a period of time. And actually, in one study we did, we had 2007 volumes and the state said continue to use the 2007 volumes in 2011. And it was based on.
But your study or the study doesn't take into effect what the River Club has done to an expansion.
I'm getting to that.
And the other development.
If I may, let me just finish and maybe we can backtrack a little bit. So we used 2011 volumes, which included the other club traffic. We then took those volumes and we grew it by 7%.
Yes, I saw that.
Which included the traffic for the other developments. Typically, if you're growing traffic on a growth rate, you take out the other traffic for other developments and just grow the background traffic. We grew all the traffic. So I think we're conservatives, especially with a 1% per year growth over a period of time to reflect the future design year. If you go to the state and say, well, what was the growth in Stanford or Darien, it might be a half a percent per year. In some cases, we actually had it was flat. We didn't change traffic base volumes at all. So we did a 1% per year here and then we grew the traffic for the Water Club for any development that was happening there. In those volumes, we grew that traffic. So I think we're reasonably conservative as far as the baseline traffic condition here and I feel comfortable for that. as the baseline traffic condition here, and I feel comfortable for that, and that's why we did it that way.
Can you go to that, this table four?
Yeah, the next step was far as the traffic, the site traffic projections on an hourly basis, which was really done for, in this case, the parking study, but we also looked at traffic during the morning peak period and the weekday afternoon peak period. Traffic studies, as you know, look at one-hour periods as far as volume.
Yes.
In the morning, when the club itself is starting up, we have employees coming in, we have people, adults coming in for rowing classes and so on.
Yes.
And we're assuming the class is one hour, and there's that 30-minute period in between the classes, if you will, for the turnover.
But you know that, that's not, I mean, your schedule of the classes says 5:30 to 7:00.
Yes, it does.
So-
We're just accounting for that turnover, maybe we should be more specific as far as the class, I call it a class, or the rowing period was a one-hour period, and then is that 30-minute in between. We had a lot of discussion about that turnover between classes, and you process the first class, 10 to 15 minutes to leave the site, second group to come in, and the 30 people each time.
I understand that there's this, what we've listened to tonight, this description of, it's actually an hour and a half an hour of wind down.
The turnover, yes, yeah.
But when we see a schedule that says 5:30 to 7:00-
I understand.
It doesn't say-
Doesn't say that.
No. And we just dealt with Soul Cycle, in which we made them put in a gap whenever they opened, and that gap is 15 literal minutes, so one class ends, you know, but you, you don't actually have that. I mean, we do have, you understand, Ms. DeLuca is a rower, so-
Oh, I heard that rumor.
I think, I asked her that question, and I think tonight she said she leaves at 7:00, so-
She did.
She doesn't leave at 6:30.
Okay, I thought you said an hour period, I missed that.
Am I right, Ms. DeLuca? So, you know, in the very best case scenario-
And she's efficient.
Somebody leaves at 7:00, and somebody arrives at 7:00, but-
No, understood, and I think what we've said is that we can adjust our schedule to accommodate that. And just so you know who we are, Clark Associates, we're town planners in lots of towns, and I've reviewed Soul Cycle, I've reviewed Equinots, and we ask for the same thing, which is that we set 15 to 20 minutes for the turnover.
Yeah.
So, I appreciate the comment.
It's actually not enough, we can tell you that from our own, and we have experience. But, here's the thing, you'll understand, since you've seen both sides of this, some people may feel that 2011 is okay.
I appreciate that comment, absolutely.
But, the concern that Mrs. Raymer's reading here is a very natural one for us to have, because it has been bouncing back a little more every year, and we see it in-
Starting to, yes.
We see it in our applications, and in our schedule, and in the traffic issues that we're encountering in town. So, if there's some way that you could refresh this assumption, I would feel a lot more comfortable.
The way we would refresh it-
I agree with Mrs. Raymer.
To use that term, we would do a traffic count.
Can I ask another question? Your study, you anticipated 80 rowers in the afternoon.
For juniors?
For juniors. Mr. Winklevoss said 100.
Yeah, because then there's 20 middle schoolers after that.
Yeah, but no, he said 100.
And the narrative says 200 for kids.
Right, so the question is, where's the breaking point in your study?
Well, if I was to increase my numbers, let's assume we increased the numbers to what we just heard a minute ago. If you look at the analysis of the driveway, and we just revised that analysis to reflect the one lane out versus the two-lane out that we had recently, the analysis shows that we're operating a level of service B, so there's reserved capacity in that driveway to accommodate a higher number. So, if I re-raise the number, I'm still going to be at acceptable levels of service for a fair amount of additional site traffic.
So, my question is, is when does it become a problem?
I've gone past-
Do a sensitivity study to make that determination.
Is it 110?
Oh, I don't know the answer, I have to-
I've been on River Road when Beacon Point, when their rowing program is letting out, it gets a little chaotic.
For a short period of time.
Okay, we're concerned about, I'll tell you what, I mean, we talked about this yesterday, I'm sorry, Andy, did you want to finish?
No, I just, my point about updating the study is, there's now going to be another rowing club to your north.
Right.
There's a very active rowing club, and they all cater to kids getting out of school. So, I think that what we're trying to get across is, we don't want this to be a nightmare.
And the key, the key hours of concern, at least, I think this is what we were saying yesterday, around the time when the school buses are on the road, the commuters are trying to get to the station, I don't, Nancy, do they have to deal with that at Sagatuck?
Oh.
School buses?
Everybody comes home, cause country.
Yes, there's an elementary school.
At Sagatuck, they're not-
Sagatuck is a couple of blocks from the train station.
So, they've got the same issue.
And there are two schools to the north.
Right above it.
Okay, so there's the same kind of issue.
Yes, I drove by this morning, I can assure you, there's school traffic.
The commuters, the school buses, and just that, that motion at 8:30, when your, rowers are getting out in the late afternoon, and in the, in the kind of 8:30 in the morning, those are the key.
Okay.
That's the assumption that I think you really need to, that's the data we need to know. That's when your peak demand, you said, was, and it's what's the real count right now, and then what can you mean?
Current count.
What's the current count at what your peak hours are going to be?
I wrote down a six, let me just tell you what I'm thinking.
Okay.
As far as the traffic count, along the frontage on River Road, from at least 6:00 to 9:00 in the morning, and most likely 2:00 to 6:00 in the afternoon. Will capture the after-school activity-
Okay, I mean, I think that's generous, because I think your peak is a slightly narrower window, but if your client doesn't mind-
Yeah, well, the reason why I say, because once we send someone out to do a traffic count-
They might as well hang out for another hour.
I don't want, we don't put it that way, but we try to do the window around it, before and after.
Can you tell me on this, on this table four, why you got to 64 in the 6:00 to 7:00, and never again the rest of the morning, when you have exactly the same-
Yeah, we're accounting for, the morning before everyone's going to work is more of a crunch time, so we've accounted for that, and really, in a worst-case scenario, as far as the parking demand-
That's your assumption.
And we're spreading it out during the rest of the day. So, we have that peak, if you will, in the morning of 64 vehicles parking, and you can see from the chart, we have a chart that supports this table, you have a peak in the morning, and then it levels off and drops off throughout the day.
But the, but the traffic, so-
The traffic accounts for that high number, the traffic study.
So, in terms of the scheduling of the, of the morning adult rowing-
Activities.
So, it's 7:00 to 8:30, so at 8:30, there's a, there's that same changeover process where-
Yes.
I would have expected to see another 64 at the end of that row. That's, that's what I'm talking about, is the-
Yeah, okay, we'll double-check that, but just, if I can go back to the traffic count and the traffic analysis for a moment.
Yeah.
The peaks of the facility-
Yep.
Which is that 64 from 6:00 to 7:00 o'clock in the morning. If you look at the peak of the road, River Road itself, it's quarter to 8:00 to quarter to 9:00 in the morning. We put those volumes together and analyzed that condition.
But I, I mean, I don't know, I, my guess is that there are rowers consistently, the number doesn't fade away after the-
We'll double-check, if we need to adjust, we will.
I'd be surprised if it does.
With all the kitchens they're putting in.
I mean, we just, we live in a community where, you know, people have a variety of schedules, and I-
Yeah.
I assume you have the, that your client has these times, because some are using them.
We've had a lot of discussions.
So, and the queuing, street queuing, we, what we see here with our schools, public and private schools, is a horrific queuing process at every single one of them-
At schools.
At the schools.
Sure.
And that's that mass entry-
Yeah, you're right.
And exit, and it's ugly, and I just am not sure why, with three rowing, junior rowing programs side by side, that isn't going to happen on River Road if there are 600 children arriving at 3:00 in the afternoon or midnight, so that's very-
We'll take a little look.
Okay.
Absolutely. Fair question.
Mr. Colanti, as part of the queuing, can you work with Mr. DeAndre and show the queuing of the drop-off pickup on the site?
On the site itself.
Great, great, that would be very helpful.
Also, were bus drop-off and pickup included or anticipated at the site?
I don't think it's school buses, but it might be vans.
Was that included?
And I'll double-check that.
Yes, please.
There was some discussion about actually bringing the students to this site in a van, as opposed to every, every parent driving their child to the class.
Exactly.
On your chart, called Summer Rowing-
Yes.
And in our staff report, 580, 581, the number of employee vehicles being parked, this is the parking-
It's eight.
Eight, yeah.
Yes.
Well, we just, Mr. Hagney and I just had a discussion about that. I came up with 18 employees, he came up with 15, but the point being, that there are two periods here in time where the parking lot is full, 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 overfull.
There's only one time in the morning when it's near capacity.
Well, 64 is, you're two. That, 85% of the lot is generally considered full.
Correct.
So, if you've got 66 spaces there, that, what does that run out to, at about, at about 58 or 59 parked, or what is it, what is the 85 percentile number? But you're in trouble with, and this is with eight employees, when we know there's going to be more, and then when you go down to the other period in time where there's 59, again, where we know there's more employees, you will be again in an overpark, you will be parking-
If I can reference the 85% parking lot utilizations, it's functioning at near capacity, that criteria is really for a shopping center, where it's a large parking lot, and you can't find those vacant spaces. In this size parking lot, you will find that vacant space. I just want to make that reference.
We've been given it-
Well, we, we get that, we get it for a lot of different uses.
We use it all the time also, but we're saying-
We get it for office buildings, so forth and so on, so it's-
I'm not telling you anything, but I'm just saying, it's really a reference to a large shopping center. That's where it comes from.
We get really uncomfortable, because that is, we've given it that on that basis, and we get kind of uncomfortable. There's also the people who do traffic studies when everybody's out of town, so-
Anyway-
I've heard that rumor.
I think that needs to be looked at, and again, that needs to be adjusted.
Well, one of the things I want to clarify about the number of employees, we're showing 16 coaches here, but they're not all there at the same time. There are eight there in the morning, and there are eight there in the evening. What, what Mr. Winklevoss was talking about earlier was having a meeting of all of them-
Did you also have this?
Where they'd be there, but not out on the water with the juniors or the adults.
You have the sales personnel for the, for the boats, you've got the, I forgot, Wind Tech boats that you're selling, and so you've got to have people who are going to be available, and you show a receptionist, and at least one, two receptionists.
Actually, three, and a pro shop, which needs-
Okay, and there's all that kitchen space, I'm up to three kitchens now, and is anybody going to work at any of those kitchens? And there's a laundry facility, so again, it isn't just the coaches, it's the same thing, and don't get us, I'm not objecting to the use, we just want to make sure that it works.
I think what we need to provide to you is a schedule of employees, hours of employment, so that you know-
Exactly, that's what we've been asking you for.
At any given time, who's going to be there.
Exactly.
And how many.
And how you're going to use the building. The uses are all fine, this is how it's going to work.
True. And take into account, please, I don't know, I don't think you want to have a sales facility, what, whether, there's going to be customer traffic coming to that too, on the second floor.
We're not, we're not a retail store that's running a rowing club, we're a rowing club that has a, retail store is an ancillary part of what they're offering.
Quite a few booths on display in the building, and it's actually on the ground floor, and it's open, I think, to the upper floor.
Well, I don't, there's no display on the ground floor, is there?
No.
What is the regatta, it function on the first floor?
The regatta, what is the regatta on the first floor?
But one of, you're asking about the regatta on the first floor, one of the things that I think Katie can attest to, is that a lot of times, people will come off the water after the session, and rather than use that 15 minutes to get off the property, they'll come into the regatta room, sit down, have a cup of coffee, try to convince everybody else in the regatta room how fast they are on the water.
This is your entry lobby, which is quite open, and it's got the receptionist in it, and it's open up, two-story spaces with stairways going up and-
Yes, and it'd be-
Not a very good room to be in, I mean, it's more of a display area, I would say.
Wait till you see it, it's going to be great. It's, the way you decorate it out, it's got a little kitchen out there for some coffee, and you know-
Huge kitchen, as a matter of fact.
We had the same thing at Sagatuck, so-
610 square feet.
Mr. Winklevoss, I'm-
610 square feet.
Not counting the kitchen that's over here.
Hold on.
Mr. Mayland, if you would, I'm getting kind of confused. You just said that-
There's another kitchen down here somewhere.
The rowers come in, and then they sit down for a cup of coffee, but then, there was the other thing where they actually had 15 minutes, and then they clear the site. I'm getting kind of confused as to the actual use of this building.
Look, I understand, I haven't been perfectly clear on that. Some people come to row, and they need to go to work. So, they're 15 minutes to get on the water, one hour on the water, and they're 15 minutes to the train, they're out of there. That's some, some of the adults. Other adults that maybe aren't working, come in and want to kick back for half an hour, and have a cup of coffee, and a donut, or whatever, and they leave, they leave, you know, casually. So, that's the way it works. It's been working that way for 15 years at Sagatuck, and, and we, we just don't have the, look, I totally understand the Soul Cycle issue. You have 40 people come in, they get on the machine in a split second, and as soon as that class is over, 40 get off, and it's a problem. We, the maximum number of adults we'll have is 30, and they say, some of them will bolt out of there, some of them will have a cup of coffee and leave.
Right.
It's not, it's not, it has never been a problem.
How many boats are you going to have on this, in the sales room?
Oh, it's, it's a small room, we can only have the, our small, you know, the single, we were thinking about having an adaptive boat there, what we call our Kinder Boat for children, in the 4th to 8th grade, 4th to 6th grade, and our, what we call a super lightweight boat, just-
So, four boats?
Three, three.
How are you getting up there?
Pardon me?
They're little.
Not easily, not easily.
So, why wouldn't you put the boat displayed?
It's just, we had the space, and, you know, it seemed like a logical place, we didn't need more offices, so stick it up there, but the-
Can you also, Marguerite has brought up several times, you have three kitchens, and can you define what, why you need three kitchens?
Sure.
And what you're preparing in them? And I see one with a range, I see, you know,
Oh, and who's-
It just depends.
If, if I may, the regatta, so-called regatta room, that will be very pleasant to be in, I promise, has a little kitchen at where you have coffee, maybe a refrigerator, not, not a kitchen, but a, you know, a place that will hold some light food for after, okay, wet bar. The second floor, where the, the office area is, it's just a, you know, we have the Xerox there, you have the, you know, get a cup of coffee, it's not a, it's just a place for-
No, it's the warming kitchen that looks relatively large off the multipurpose room.
610 square feet, it's a big kitchen.
Yeah, so, when, so that's, that's the third, third one that you're asking about.
20 by 30, well, and the one in the back, too, it's pretty good size. The one that says it's a workroom kitchen, that's 350 square feet. That's bigger than my kitchen.
It's, I wish, maybe it's mislabeled, it's, look, that's an area where, where you go, you get a Coke out of the refrigerator, you have a cup of coffee, there's a couple tables in there.
Mr. Hagney knows what we're trying to ask you.
Okay.
The concern that we have is, we love the uses that you're talking about, we want to know how they're going to work, and we don't want the building to be used for non-water dependent things, and how this looks, without the explanation of how the people, is, makes us concerned. If you lay it all out, we're just-
We just fired the architect, so, they're gone.
Just fire the, no, if you lay it all out and just explain it, you could probably get us completely comfortable, and we wouldn't be asking you any questions.
We understand the, both the layout that you're looking for, the chart of employees, and a description of all activities.
Roll down, just put everything there.
We, we understand what you're, what you're asking us, and we'll have that for you.
Oh, yes, yes.
Oh, yeah, Mrs. Raymer has more.
Now, now, these are the minor questions. Public access, one of the comments in our report is, the public access is incomplete, it's six feet wide, it's not boards.
We're creating this flexi-pave, which the conservation staff asked about, which I provided the data onto the staff, rather than, I don't think, it's meant to be a boardwalk with boards.
Fair enough.
I think it's, it's important that it's delineated, and that people know where it is, and that they can enjoy it.
And that it's wide enough to enjoy.
Yes.
Is it going to be six feet, or is it going to be better?
We had discussed six feet at the last hearing, I'll, I'll check the transcript, but I'm pretty sure-
Thought the number was eight.
In July, we had discussed-
Eight, I think, is the number I recall.
Mr. Hagney, I believe that this was 10 feet discussed last-
Mr. Hagney, I believe that this was ten feet discussed last time.
There we go.
I know it's ten feet at the Water Club, I don't know, and I was looking through the records for the Brunswick boat house, which I was...
I believe at Brunswick, it was six feet.
Okay, I don't, it's not in the record there, so...
And that, we ended up, when we were handling Brunswick, we said we're going to match what was on this property to make sure that it was consistent in terms of width.
We flip back to the colored, the marked up drawing?
And look.
I just, I obviously raised the comment that Mrs. Raymer is talking about, could you, with your hand, follow the easement that you've shown or indicated, or Mr. DeAndrea, whoever did this drawing?
The, I don't want to block it while I'm showing, this is, what Mr. DeAndrea's showing in the dark blue is the coastline.
Okay.
So, we're not going to have anyone walking in the water. It's this blue, light blue, where it comes in, goes around the building, and then goes over and meets where it begins for the Brunswick property.
Now, there is a parallel hash line in that, between that light blue oblong semicircular path and the coastline, that shows itself every couple of feet going in and out. What, what is that? Because it seems to be indicated with the leader lines.
That's what we had originally shown as the, as the public access.
Okay.
And we thought that this would work better.
So...
Why? I don't get that.
Because it's a smooth curve rather than a jagged path.
But being close to the water is nice, when you're walking on a waterway thing.
Well, the question I ask to the commission is, is this pathway, is it worthwhile having the easement follow the pathway that they're proposing to construct, or just having the easement on the property? I don't know what the...
I'd like to have our landscape architect just talk about how this was developed, and put...
That's the one that's got the landscape, okay, yeah.
Tara, you need the microphone.
My name is Tara Vincenta, I'm the principal of Artemis Landscape Architects, and we developed the, not only the planting plan, but we also developed the, the back areas here for staging the boats, as well as for establishing where the public access would go. And so, I made this beautiful arching curve, which also actually follows the coastline in a couple of places very closely, and used a different material to make sure that it was very clear to pedestrians where they would walk. So, it's a different material, but it's also made of a porous material so that water will go through it, so it, it's a very, it's a very positive element from a drainage standpoint for the property. We're also proposing to use pavers back here, which are permeable, so it's all done in a very environmentally sensitive way. In addition, just from a functional standpoint, we thought that because you're going to have a lot of kids coming and going from the dock areas, that to keep the pathway away from that would make it much easier for the activities, people maneuvering in and out of these areas. And we've also provided kind of like a, an L-shaped, very long bench here, so that anybody who's walking that path is welcome to also sit on that bench and view the rowing, which is a beautiful, fun thing to watch, or just enjoy the coastline. We also, so, and then we were...
If it's to view the coastline, why wouldn't you have put it in the other corner of the site?
Well, you... Pardon me?
Put it, flip it, so that it's...
Well, over here?
No, 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 just take the square and put it to diagonal, go, instead of the L going that way, the L goes this way.
Because the coastline goes the other way.
Well, it goes both, both directions here.
Yeah.
You can sit in either direction on this bench, so it doesn't have a back, it's a backless bench, I'm sorry, so you can sit in either direction, either inward oriented or outward oriented.
It just, just would seem that the view to the south is more important than the view to the north, but that's...
This is all to the south, so you can sit there and look in this direction forever.
How do you...
And we've also used...
So, it's just a flat bench, there's no back to it?
It's just a flat bench, right, flat bench. And then, we've also incorporated, you know, all the plantings, they're all along the coast, also kept low, so as not to interrupt any of the views.
Have you, have you had a chance, has the conservation department seen this landscaping plan? Because they had a whole lot of comments that I think the landscaping plan mostly addresses.
I don't think that they had this plan, no.
That Alexandra had seen it? So, her comments are absent, what the land, because she's asking for, I believe, what you're doing, it would be good for you guys to take a look at her comments.
We did get a copy of them today, and we'll circulate them around with everyone, and get, make sure that Alexandra has a copy of this plan.
If you look at what, and we'll ask you that later, but if you look at what she's suggesting, it seems like that's what you're doing, that you do a buffer along the tidal marsh, which is there.
These are all native riparian and flood-resistant plantings that are all used.
She's asking, asking for that as well, and then she's suggesting, and that's what you've done, is to put it between the public walkway and the riprap, which is exactly what you have. I think she might want a wider band, but there you are. By the way, Madam Court Reporter, their landscaping company is A R T E M I S, I don't know if you caught that when she introduced herself, yeah?
Go ahead.
Thank you.
This, I may not be on your drawing, but there's a, a series of, it's on Mr. DeAndrea's drawings, on the water side of this path, a series of little star-shaped things, are those lights, or, what are they? Yeah?
On this side of the path, there are bollard lights, yes.
Okay.
And while this is considered kind of a dawn-to-dusk facility, we put those bollards back there in the event that Row America has some evening activity, and they want to make sure that the back area is lit.
I don't know if there's any, I think the lights go out at twelve o'clock, ten or eleven o'clock, don't they? All right.
Ten o'clock.
Ten, okay.
Excuse me, I just wanted to ask you a little bit more about this curve. I'm not sure that I understand the curve completely. I appreciate the fact that you still have views from trial, but it seems to me that meandering along the coast is a different experience than having this boardwalk removed from, from the coast.
I agree with you.
The edge of, the edge of the water.
I agree with you, and I, I use, I use the one at the Water Club a lot.
So, I'm not saying that it's a bad idea, I'm just trying to understand it.
Right.
Because I feel as though, maybe, being, you know, once, once you're trying to come to the water and you don't get there, that's access, that's a kind of a, it's a, kind of a, an axis denied.
Well, it's an unusual...
So, I just want to understand what the...
Well, the land shape is a little unusual here with this peninsula that juts out here. And so, this, this is also an area, like I said, where there's going to be a lot of boats being carried back and forth.
Yeah.
So, it felt from a design standpoint that it was good to, to let that be separate, and, but also...
I appreciate what you're saying, but I'm looking at it, and I don't understand it. I'm just trying to understand it. See, it seems to me that the boats have to cross through this right of way, no matter where it is, so I don't understand that comment, so...
Well, because there's going to, I think that this is an area more like a gathering space, if you will, okay? So, and it doesn't preclude anyone who's walking through the space from stopping and enjoying that same gathering space, but because this is a peninsula here, I think that it serves itself well, you know, for the main use of the property, which is as a rowing club, for rowers to come and sit while they're waiting for their boat, or taking things in.
You're talking about that square area?
Yes. And so, taking, then taking a boardwalk, and, and as you can see, we are close to the water here, and we've got another area over here where...
I don't know, it doesn't look that close to me. It looks like it's more than fifteen feet away, but you tell me. More than fifteen feet away doesn't seem very close.
Right here, you're within five feet of the water here.
But not, not at that other area, so...
And, and, because you'd be, you'd be going around this, you'd be, it's a small area, and you'd be making a right, a left, a right.
Could you just give me an idea of how close you are as you go along, along the water's edge?
Well, what I wanted to do was to highlight what was the plan that we showed you back in July, and what was part of what you approved in 2012 versus what Tara's showing you here, and from River Road to this point, we're exactly in the same location.
Yeah, we know that.
From here, we're coming, this is what was shown on the prior plan.
Yep.
So, here, maybe we're a couple of feet away, here, we're five feet away, here, we're two feet away.
Your dotted line is where it was. Yeah, you're following that dotted line.
And then the rest of it continues to, to the Brunswick property, so, we're really just talking about this area here, we were looking for it to be more uniform rather than more jagged, and as Tara pointed out, this is the area where we're going to have the most activity crossing out to the, to the floes.
What difference does it make whether it crosses there or cross?
Creating a planting buffer, which I think is a really nice thing. Somebody's mic isn't on, I'm sorry. Yeah. Mr. Hagney took your mic.
We also thought it would be nice to leave room there to create a natural planting buffer.
Yes, and conservation is asking.
And that's really also part of consideration for conservation and for drainage for water, and...
But that said, I'm a heavy user of these walkways that exist now.
So, jagged versus curved?
Jagged is fine with me, I like, the Water Club weaves around, in fact, at one point, you have to hop up onto the porch of their building, you know, and you weave around, and that's fine, because you're staying close to the water the whole time.
You're talking about three feet difference, is that correct?
Yeah, it's just, it's fine.
So, what we want to be able to do is address the Conservation Commission's comments, keep that, that buffer, we'll look at how we can adjust this, because it's just in this corner right here that we're talking about.
I agree with Donald, it's no big deal.
I think, well, I think it is, actually, it's a big deal.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I mean, I think it is a big deal, we do, on, on the earlier project we had here this evening, on the water, South Water Street, we have the boardwalk right on, right on the water, right over the retaining wells and so forth. If you go down to the River Club, your place that you enjoy, it's a very meandering kind of walk and so forth, it is not a forced geometric walk, and I think the meandering is part of the whole experience of the water, so I...
Okay.
I would agree with that.
We'll certainly review this and come up with a revised design.
Ms. Vincent, I've got a question for you. Was your intent for this pathway, as you approach and pass between the water and the building, to give a sense of both the monumental scale of the building, its glass and its facade, and a sense of the water at the same time?
Yes.
To me, if we're walking through jagged corners and changes, I'm more in a relationship to this kind of, this sea wall that's kind of a leftover, as opposed to maybe a bulkhead that was being newly constructed, it seems to me that you're creating a kind of a, a outdoor place or space with the pathway passing through it.
That's exactly correct, and, and also, to use more organic form, if you will, that is a reflection of water, so that's the reason for the sort of beautiful, elegant, sweeping curve that goes through this area.
So, as you pass through on the arc, you can get to the center, to that one area, you can actually stop, and that's part of...
That's part of the experience.
...is part of the pathway.
Exactly.
And they continue around.
Exactly, yeah.
Okay, Nancy, what else did you have?
I, I guess you haven't seen Alex Mock's...
Yeah, by accident.
We have, and I believe, although we've seen hers, I don't think she has seen our plan.
I just...
Because many of the comments that she has are addressed with this plan, and I'm not sure what Alex was looking at, but we'll certainly share this with her.
So, are there trees in the parking lot now?
Yes.
Okay. We don't, I'm just, because we're, you know, you're going to be back, I'm, I'm just trying to go through my little list here.
We're really looking for affirmative vote this evening.
I see.
You're talking about, eh, trees in the parking lot before you move on?
I thought a little joke at eleven o'clock would be helpful.
Maybe you shouldn't have come with a final.
Mr. Hagney? I don't see the trees in the parking lot.
One of the comments, guys, who else, anybody else?
We have...
What? You got, go ahead.
We have a number of trees located here, here, and then here.
In the corners of the parking lot?
Right, in the corners, yeah.
Is there any way that you can take a look at putting some street trees in, in the buffer that you're actually showing in the section?
I know that discussion came up yesterday, and that's, that's another thing that we will be looking at, to provide, see if we can provide some street trees.
Because it looks like I'm getting a lot of ornamental grasses all over the place, but it, understanding what the architect has in mind for the building, maybe a little verticality in some areas, specifically along the street, would help bring the building into scale, and it also might make the sea of asphalt in the front of the building a little bit more palatable to everybody.
We do have a section that we provided there for sightlines from...
Yeah, I see that, and it actually shows the low buffer, but I'm talking about something that's got a little bit more...
Sure.
...height to it.
Sure.
Give it a little bit of canopy.
And I just would like...
The permeable rubber, this is the Mock's other, permeable, sorry, permeable pavers contain rubber?
We actually have a, a environmental study and report from the Flexi pave company and the consultant, environmental consultant that they hired, to show that this does not in any way have any negative impact on the environment, and in fact, one of the things I handed to the staff shows that it's used next to a drinking water source.
Yeah, but does it contain rubber?
It contains no rubber. It's, it's actually called Perma Drive, and it's, it's made of all aggregate material.
Okay, thank you.
So, one thing, we have a huge parking lot here, and not one tree, don't we have in, in the parking lot, in the center?
Not in the center, no, in the center...
But don't we have to have, for our regulations, some breakups, what else?
What we're showing here is porous pavement, and as part of that, that's our detention basin for the water quality as well. I think what we were talking about was providing some street trees here, and we're going to be looking at that.
I was looking for trees in the center.
Well, I, I think that, that sort of runs counter to the, the idea of the reservoir for runoff.
Move it.
Trees work as a reservoir.
What Mr. DeAndrea's created, and I thought, give him a bit of a break now, is, is that we pitch it down toward the center here.
I saw the, I know, I'm just saying, you're creating a brand-new parking lot that is not one tree in it, and then we have regulations, every ten spaces is supposed to have a tree.
Well, I, I think the trees would be more appropriate along the, the street rather than in the center of the parking lot. I would point out that there were no trees on this site at all previously, and we're providing some more significant, both landscaping and green space than has been there for probably a very long time.
Peter, go ahead.
Here, you should need to be compliant to our regulations.
We'll, we'll look at providing some alternate schemes for the landscaping, or...
Can I make one point? I was working with Tony DeAndrea on this, and, and based on the drainage study that he did, that's the reason why we didn't have any trees in the center, but...
So, you have to address why you don't need our regulation?
Well, Tony just indicated to me that we can, in fact, drop, drop some spaces there if we need to, to get a few trees, but we...
I don't think so.
I don't think so, because we just told you, we just told you that we might be short parking spaces, Tony, you didn't really say that.
Miss Albom would be upset if I didn't say something tonight, so, here's what I'm going to say. The reservoir in the, in the middle of the parking lot was done so we can drain the water to the middle and infiltrate, and it made Scott very happy, that was important. But I just suggested to Tara that there's no reason why we can't expand the stone a little bit more to the outside, cut a hole, fill it with dirt, and let a tree grow.
Because a tree does reservoir job, too.
Yes, that's correct, and I don't know what you said, but I believe you're correct, but I was going to say that if Si Schwartz can grow trees in his parking decks, we can certainly grow trees in the middle of this parking lot.
All right.
And I wanted to add one more thing, just from my own, as you were debating that meandering sidewalk.
Yes.
Keep in mind that there's really no differential, differentiation between the materials here, Keep in mind that there's really no differential, differentiation between the materials here, except perhaps a little bit of color. But if you ever walk across a college quad, nobody walks on angles. They don't. They wear out a path diagonally across. And I think what Tara did here was make that curve properly, so, and they got access to every place along the water. Pick your spot and sit down.
Look, what we want at the end of the day is, I'm going to go ahead and say this, is that what you do for the path be consistent, and one of the concerns here is, the Water Club has 10 feet, Brunswick is a smaller facility and has six, you're a pretty big facility, it should be more close to the width of Brunswick, of Water Club, sorry. One thing. The second thing is, the material of the walkway that you're using, it sounds great, but it's inconsistent with what we have at the Water Club and at Brunswick. Everybody else has boards. So the idea of continuity along the water is lost on your site, from what I'm understanding here, because you're using a different material.
Well, there is a break between the Water Club and our property, there's one site in between.
Right.
And we're coming off of River Road, not off of Water Club property.
People will walk to Water Club, go back up, because there's that gravel path, you go back up to the River Road, and then the idea is you're going to walk through your site and on. I mean, that's the idea. We may have another lot, but people are going to try and walk. That's what I would do.
Why don't we take a look at the material next time we meet?
Certainly, I think that's a good idea, Mr. Chairman.
And the second thing is, I think, I think the point is well-taken, and we ought to debate, you know, how the walk should be built, so to speak. Okay? Because I think the point's well-taken.
Perhaps what you can do is provide us with what the other properties have, so we can look at that, because off the top of my head, I can think of three. It's the Kabora property, which is in easement. The Crawl property is actually two types, because of the area that goes on the backside of the...
That's gravel.
Yeah, the gravel area. Then they've got boardwalk, and then you've got the Brunswick property.
And also part of it is just walking through the parking lot.
And Palmer Point, too.
Okay, hold it now. Peter?
I'd just like to make one, a couple of comments about the building. It's big, and I'm not sure, and it's very monumental, and it's, because of this continuous roof line and the vast, the vastness of the walls, I'm just wondering, and also the height, I think it's 42 feet height, which, so it does tower above the road. I'm just wondering about...
That'd be 42 feet high.
Well, that's what I want, I should ask you, because that's what I was reading here.
No, we have, it's 30 feet to the roof deck, and then a four-foot parapet.
I'm sorry, you said 32?
It's 30 feet from average grade to the parapet, and then, to the flat roof, excuse me, and then four feet for the parapet. I would add that we're almost 60,000 square feet. The floor area ratio for this zone is .5, which would permit 29,000 square feet of space, and we're at 20,000.
Yeah, but you still have to park it.
Well, parking tends to be more of a limiting factor than FAR.
Yeah, that's actually, exactly.
Commercial properties. But I certainly want to be able to address that, but certainly we're well below what's permitted.
All right, hold on, let me make a spot.
All right. So I'm trying to, I'm thinking about this, and I'm wondering if there's something about the massing that could be reduced, because it towers above the road, and it's a very big building, and it takes up the site. And maybe it's just as simple as doing a little bit more landscaping to help soften it. You know, I don't, you gave us, you know, this is the first time I've seen this drawing, and I'm just trying to understand it, but it's a very imposing building, although lovely, you know, there's wonderful materials, and it's very expressive, but it's quite massive. And especially the way you've shown it with the people going into the lobby and showing this towering space. So anything to give it scale, I think, would go a long way to making it fit into the streetscape a little bit better.
Well, one of the things that we were looking to do was to set the building back so that it, from the perspective of the street, it is much smaller.
Clever enough. But as Mr. Maitland said, that, you know, if you turned it 90 degrees, it would make a tremendous difference as far as how it's perceived. And that's also a good trick. So I'm just, I'm going a little bit further on that regard, saying that, again, that it is a very massive building.
And as I mentioned, the FAR for the property would be 29,000 square feet, and we're at 20.
Right, but this is a modern building that has, has not used a lot of scaling devices like windows and other things, other features to break up the surfaces. This is a very, you know, a continuous roof, very large and high walls, and towering spaces. And so there's a different kind of scale going on here.
It's to give it a more open look.
Well, it's monumental, and it's quite lovely, but nonetheless, this is a neighborhood.
Well, you know, I did want to...
I'm trying to, I'm looking at this and wondering about it.
I was thinking a bit about that, and in terms of what's on the street now, and at Drankin's Boat Basin, we have the concrete building that's been painted white, that's closer to the post road. Then we have the monumental roof that's on the other side of the Brunswick boathouse.
Yes, which is what we're trying to avoid.
And we're looking for something completely different than that, too. Then, as we go along the Beacon Point Marine or Water Club, we have the monumental boats in storage, which, as you go along, really dominate the streetscape there.
Not right now.
Well, it did today when I took the photo.
In another month.
And then we get close to the throughway, and we have just a painted brick building. So we're looking for something that we think will be distinctive and be architecturally significant, and, well, that's what we'll be presenting to the Architecture Review Committee at the beginning of next month.
How do you, it's giving you something to think about?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Together with the idea of the 90, would you say 90 feet?
90 degrees. 90 degrees.
When are you...
You reduce that feeling a lot.
When are you going before ARC?
That would be April 6.
I think, given what Mr. Levy has just said, I would certainly want you to incorporate, to wait until after you've heard them out before you're back on our schedule.
I think that that makes sense. There's a good deal of information that you're looking for. We have to do the traffic study update. We want to look at the various aspects of the uses within the building, prepare those charts for you.
But I think they may share, I don't know if they will, but they may share some of Mr. Levy's concerns.
Could be.
And we'll, we'll take a look at the potential changes.
Do we have any more comments?
Mr. Hagney?
Just, we need those photos that you put into the record.
Anybody from the public, any comments from the public? Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, while Mr. Mazza's walking up, I just want to let everyone know that we received a letter today from Mr. Crawl and his representation, sort of asking the commission to reconsider this application. I want to give that out now for the record.
To reconsider which application?
This application.
That's some sense of timing.
Yeah. Mr. Tessie, who's representing Mr. Crawl, sort of predicted that this was not going to go forward tonight, so he left the letter in hopes that that was true. So that's why he's not here to represent the letter today.
Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name is Frank Mazza. I'm chairman of the Harbor Management Commission. And it's interesting, listening to everything you said tonight, the trouble is, you didn't talk about anything underwater, really.
Good. It says your job.
And there are problems out there already. Now, we're not opposed to this application or to this rowing group, but we've had complaints already about interaction between rowers and powerboats. And actually, we have sponsoring a meeting, which is taking place tomorrow night. It's being run by the Marine Division of the Police Department, and it's between the three rowing clubs, the two yacht clubs that are in the river, and representatives of all the marinas that are in the river. And we're going to talk about protocol, safety, and the operations of boats in the harbor. Now, the Myanis River is essentially a navigation channel, federal navigation channel. Federal navigation channels are created by acts of Congress, and they can only be changed by acts of Congress. I know we just heard something about maybe there'll be a little more dredging in the river. There's not going to be any more dredging in the river for a long, long time. We are working very closely right now with the deep and the Corps of Engineers, and we're almost at the point where we're going to get the river dredged this fall. All we need is one more permit from the state, and they can't give us that permit until the Environmental Protection Agency says the thumb site in western Long Island Sound can be open. And hopefully, that's going to happen. But anyway, I will, the navigation channel is 100 feet wide, six feet deep at mean-low water, and it starts just south of the Riverside Yacht Club, and it runs up to just below Route 1 Bridge. On the west side, the channel runs up tight against all the marinas. On the east side, there's just water, except at low tide, there's no water. And you have varying conditions all day long, and all night, obviously, every day it changes. The tides change every day, so every day, you have a different condition in the river. Now, the rowers, essentially, when they're going out, right now, we have two rowing clubs, and I have a lot of experience, because I have a boat and I'm out there probably five days a week in the summertime. But we have the rowing clubs, and they tend to go out right down the middle of the channel. And they're entitled to do that. There's nothing that says they can't do that. But you have to remember, the skull is maybe, I don't know, it's 18 inches wide, then it has an oar on each side that goes out probably six, eight feet, so the beams of these skulls are about 16 feet wider. That's probably wider than the beam of any of the powerboats that are in that river. So that can give you a little bit of an idea of what some of the problems are. And there are 850 powerboats in that river. As you go down, there's a choke point in the river, too, which is the railroad bridge. The railroad bridge has a, it's a drawbridge, it has a span of 67 feet, but it has cribbing on the inside, and there's a span of approximately 60 feet. When you're coming in from the outside, coming up the river, it curves. So as you're coming in, inbound on the river, there's a blind spot right inside of the railroad bridge. And I'm just bringing all these things to your attention, because these are problems. And I don't say they're insurmountable. We're going to try to work with everybody, but it's a problem right now on, most of the rowers go out 3 o'clock to 6 o'clock in the afternoon. You know, it's most of their kids go to school and everything. And you'd be amazed, if you go out there about 3 or 4 o'clock, and see the number of boats going out. At high tide, it's not so bad at the railroad bridge, because they can go out on side span. But at low tide, there's no way to get out except through that center span. And it means everybody goes in that way, goes out that way. And I'm just bringing this up to try to make you aware, because there's cause and effect here. You've talked about parking and everything else on the building, but you haven't talked about what happens with what goes out into the water. And that's the most important thing in this whole application of what goes out into the water. And I don't have a good answer for you, because I don't think there is any answers to determine what the capacity of a river is, or a channel. I mean, there's no formulas, there's nothing that you can equate to what you can do with the traffic on a road. But I want you to be aware of it. We're certainly going to be able to, willing to work with everybody, and we see what you come up with. But I think in your final application, you should get more information on how many boats are going to be in the water and what time they're going to be in the water. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mazza, before you sit down, Mr. Mazza, has, was Row America invited to your meeting next week?
Yeah, tomorrow night.
Tomorrow night?
Hmm?
Was this organization invited to your meeting tomorrow night?
Yes.
Yes, they've been invited, yeah.
Yeah, there's one of the three.
Thank you, appreciate it. Does anybody else want to say anything? What's your name again?
Don Conway. As a former boater, up until last year, I finally got rid of it, only because I just didn't use it as much. But I'll tell you, every word that Frank Mazza just said is absolutely true. I had a 24-foot cabin cruiser. How many times at near-low tide, or low tide, or just to pass it, I was able to stop and wait for skulls to go by or clear out. Sailboats can't. They turn around, and Frank didn't mention that. And in that little channel that we got, you have at some times, three, four, five sailboats, powerboats, making turns, everybody staying out of each way, but you can't go in that mud. You go in that mud, your engine is dead. So please, think about that. The second thing, on your traffic study, I-95 backs up quite a bit. They come down River Road, off of Exit 4. That's where they go to the post road, over the bridge, and up through Riverside. So please think about that, too. Thank you.
Thanks, Don.
We are in a, we are in a very interesting time period here, in that a new Harbor Management Commission has been formed, and as I said, that they're in this, in this process of their draft plan, and part of the reason why the Harbor Management Commission was formed is to manage the harbors. So as Mr. Mazza's saying, we've talked about this in relation to our conversation with the WB Zone, it's one thing that would be very advantageous to the commission, is some sort of idea of the capacity of these various harbors, and as you've indicated, that's a very difficult thing to determine. So then I think that boils down to the management of how things happen within the harbor, and that's where the Harbor Management Commission comes in, and they can be very valuable, once their plan is in place, to be able to evaluate these types of applications and get comment to the commission. So since the plan's not in play at the moment, it's still in draft format, we are in this difficult time period, but obviously, the town has recognized that this is something that they need to get a handle on, and that's, that's why that management commission is formed.
We're also in a...
Of course, this is a water-dependent use, having rowboats, and I would hate to think that the Harbor Management Commission would be in some way standing in the way of actually using the harbors. So I, we understand the need for safety, and it's a paramount concern for my clients, but I'd hate to have to wait around to see what happens.
Not suggesting that at all. I was just talking about how it's a newly-formed club, and I'll just put in a plug for the WB Zone study we're about to, we're about to start, because that's a part of this conversation also, in recognition that we, that we have this fantastic resource, and there's obviously a relationship between upland uses and the water. Our regulations are very clear right now that water-dependent uses are the use permitted, and as you said, this is a water-dependent use. But going forward, obviously, we're starting to see some of these conflicts, and that's why the town has taken the action that they have with the formation of the Harbor Management Commission, and why this commission has decided to go forward with the study of the WB Zone. So future, future plans, I'm just putting it out there that we're, things we're looking out for the future.
And we're looking forward to all that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
We're not going to close tonight, after all, right?
No.
Okay. I think we're all set, guys. Okay? So we leave this open, and thank you. Thank you, folks, for coming.
We need an extension? I don't think so.
Okay. Okay, let's go through this, guys.
Let me move approval of...
Let's do the minutes first, guys.
Approval of the February 23 minutes.
Second, somebody, all of us, say aye.
No, Levy seconded first. Sorry, you got beat.
Next is the South Water Street.
Approval of the February 23 minutes.
Second, somebody. All of y'all say aye.
No, Levy seconded first. Sorry, you got beat.
Next is the South Water Street.
Do you want to do... Do you want to do other first?
No.
South Water Street right now.
I don't think we should.
What?
I was commenting to Marguerite about something. Just a second, let me get it.
Got it. I heard you.
We're on South Water Street.
Yes, we are.
Any comments, anybody?
No, they got me comfortable. I'm good.
Yeah. Ready? My mic's on. This is a preliminary. Therefore, the motion would be a move to final. No action on special permit with the following comments. Obviously, resolve the matters with DEEP on the design. Clearly, a confirmation needs to be given to us, I believe, on the site remediation and exactly what's going to be done. Thirdly, I do believe that the applicant should provide the south... The walkway along the south side of the property.
Can I ask you about that before you go on, or you want to finish?
No, we can discuss any of these at any time.
Okay. Because Nancy and I were talking about the idea that maybe it's appropriate that they could provide access on that southern side until a time when there's some other access going along the water. What do you think about... Is that reasonable?
Well, I have a feeling...
Is that helpful, or is that...
I think what we should... The study that we did for Byram was looked at multiplicity of access points to the water. They were... The study was not trying to reduce the number, but in fact, trying to increase the number. So, in keeping with that plan... And in fact, I think to try to put a sunset, a walkway or something, I think either we get it or we don't. And I think getting it is important. We had testimony from someone that, you know, walking the loop is a more enjoyable experience than walking down and walking back. And I think that the space is there. It's not... I mean, it's not obstructing anybody's views. The boatyard is what these people will look at on their walkout because... And it's just jam full of boats. I mean, that's what's there now. So, I think that the walkway is a positive. And again, we... This is a residential use in a waterfront zone, and it's not a permitted use, and it was only there by a court settlement. And I think that anything that we can do to further that use is good. So, I think...
It's a good response.
I would propose that they... They'll... If they can do it or they don't, they'll come back. But as a condition to move to final, we'll discuss it again.
Good.
Thank you. I do think maybe it's a positive thing. I do believe that the idea of the one building versus the two buildings is a very positive thing. Just did a quick calculation because with the two scheme, we were getting like an 82-foot-wide corridors of view to the water, or whatever we're going to see. And now, we've got like 96 lineal feet of view to the water. So, I believe that that increase is substantial, and it's positive. Clear of the remediation of the site, I got that. Yeah, well, I'm just going to pick up all departmental comments as a single thing because that's it. I think they looked for bicycle parking. Now, we have a lot for people within the building. But if we... They said they could add a few next to the parking lot, right, for the public who might want to come down. I would like... Right now, the plan shows a very peculiar thing. The only way I can do it is just to unfold the plan and show it to everybody and see what you think. But right now, the public boardwalk is out here. And yet, they put a... There's a fence going along the edge here. This building then has a gate to get out to the public boardwalk. Then it comes down, and the fence now is shown coming back like this with a gate here so that the people on the boardwalk can walk in. And I... And there's another gate over here to... So, the building is now... Yeah, but I don't see why. It would seem to make more sense to have the fence continue along here and then have a gate in the fence for the people from here to go to the boardwalk than to open this up because he was so concerned. I mean, he made a point about... I mean, this is closer to this than this is closer to this about the impact on this on... I just think it's something they should study. If they want to do it, it's their project. But I just...
But ultimately, it's just something they have to decide on.
Yeah.
The location of the gates from the residences.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They show this area right now is exposed to the boardwalk.
Right.
It doesn't seem to make any sense.
Yeah, I think they are actually in the process of studying that. They've been talking about burning that area up a little bit more to create more...
All right, well... Okay. Well, it's just a comment. It's a condition.
So, what worthwhile comment?
That's all I've got. And plus, any other staff and departmental comments.
What is the width of the public access?
The public access, the water is 10 feet because that's the boardwalk, which is out here. This is the major public thing. I think the access to it could easily be 6 feet, 8 feet. I don't think it needs to be more than that because you're... You're just trying to get out to the water at that point. And over here, the access is a little bit wider, but it's really... You're kind of going down between a building. Between this wall and this building, it's kind of not a great access to the water. At least... Okay, you said it. I didn't.
Okay, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so this is okay. Next, we have Hawthorne Street.
Andy seconded.
Hawthorne Street. This is... You're on this one?
Yes.
I think maybe before we... Before I make a motion, I think we should maybe discuss this matter of it being five units or four units. I personally believe that the plan works as it is, but there seemed to be a lot of comment. And I don't know if it affected others or not.
It hasn't affected... I think there was confusion in terms of what the meaning is of five versus four, Don.
Don, you can't speak on this.
I don't think you can talk on this one.
Oh, that's right. Sorry about that.
Thanks. Thanks for helping out.
I think the...
It's my introverted nature.
That Nick made about making the street frontage more as a front of a house versus the side would alleviate. And I think if they would make the entrance to that unit off the street versus off the parking lot, it would... I would be more comfortable with doing two. And I think that would solve the problem.
I think the only thing that... The only way to do it because right now, they're hitting hard on the 25 feet. Yeah. For the thing. However, they can reduce... I think they could probably reduce that gap a little bit down there.
For building code.
Right.
5 feet between...
Okay. So, I think that would be better to reduce this, and then we could get something on the face of that building. Okay?
I'd love to see them...
Reduce what?
The distance between the...
Distance between the buildings.
All right, well, I wanted to get that out of the way before we go any further. So, okay, with that as a comment, to study that, to reduce the gap between the two buildings and use that space to create an entrance, a front entrance to the side facing the street.
Or even just some kind of a street face.
Right. Well, you're not going to get much done in 5 feet. So, I mean, it's even too tight even for a porch. I know, but that gives them a little bit of room. He could bump out a foot or two, maybe do whatever. It's their problem.
And I think they should give... Show where a sidewalk would be... Would go. And if the town does it, then it's there.
Two things. They stated... Somebody stated that they're willing to do it. But they are... Because they're not going to do it on the whole street. But they did ask us to refer the question to the DPW to see if they would study for a street sidewalk. So, the question is, do we put in a sidewalk and let the sidewalk to nowhere?
Which I don't approve. I think they... I just want to show it so that...
Okay, so we can... Future. Future sidewalk.
And they would have to pay their portion of...
But the question would be is what can we say to DPW about studying that street for a sidewalk? Because when you look at the aerial photo, there's some buildings which are tight to that street, and I don't see how it's going to get in. So, do you think it's even...
Remember, we're working on that plan now. We're working on the Glenville-Pemberwick Plan.
Yeah.
And we can make a recommend... I mean, that plan is recommending sidewalks. I mean, it's going to end up there. Not necessarily. I mean, they have a sidewalk plan, so I don't know if the street is on... Is in that plan.
It can be.
But I think I... You have to... I don't think the sidewalk is a sidewalk as you should think of it as a sidewalk because like Andy said, it's a sidewalk to nowhere.
Exactly.
But it's an interesting proposition to create a street buffer between the wall and the street and prevent people from parking on what would be kind of leftover land between the asphalt. And I think that would actually go to alleviate some of the neighbors' concerns of people parking willy-nilly on the street, even though it was a sidewalk to nowhere. At least it had a curb, and it prevented people from just pulling up on the front of the wall.
I would prefer to do that. If they're not going to build a sidewalk, I'd prefer them to do it landscaping and not waste the money doing something like that.
Yeah.
At least a curb.
A curb.
Just a curb.
But your idea of showing where it could be if anybody ever put it... Andy was just saying...
I think just showing...
Show where it could be if there was eventually a sidewalk plan. But then also, incorporate your... Nick's idea of a buffer between the street for now. So, do both things.
Well, a buffer between... What do you mean?
Between the wall...
They've got a pretty extensive planting, but what do you...
Yeah, but it's inside of their wall. What I'm thinking is that between the outside of their wall and the edge of asphalt is...
Well, that's the town.
I know that, but propose a curb so we don't have people parking, you know, in front of the wall. Because I think that was the problem with the neighbors, that they didn't want people kind of parking willy-nilly. If there's no room inside, they're parking on the street, and now the whole thing looks terrible. And I think even with just a simple curb, people wouldn't be jumping the curb to get up on top of the... That landscape area.
The thing is, again, is that a street with no curb anywhere in this is going to be the only...
Right. It is. I'm pretty sure it is from when...
And I don't know... I mean, on something like that, I don't know if we can do... How do we interface with the Highway Department on those kinds of things?
They have to pull a highway permit for the driveway.
Yeah.
They're going to pick up all of those requirements for the highway permit. And...
See, we could put the curb in, but the fact is, if you don't put a tree or something there, I don't know that a curb is going to stop anybody from parking there, frankly.
I don't know. If the town requires a granite curb, I mean, the most hardiest of truck drivers would think twice about jumping on that granite curb.
We request that they take another look at the front.
Yeah.
Study it.
Regarding the planting.
Okay.
Yeah.
Let's give them something else to study.
And also address the side of the building, and do we talk about it?
Yeah, well, that was the first thing we gave them, so that's in there. The sump pump bothers me, and I do think that if they are depending on the sump pump, I think we need to get a generator for it to make sure that it works. So...
Well, I mean, for insurance purposes?
They're going to need to...
No, but I mean, it's just going to...
Saying it doesn't cover their buildings. It's got to be inside the facility to count for their insurance.
Well, wherever... No, but wherever the sump pump is, it's pumping water out of something. And I don't know if it's... It's not out of the basement of the building. So, it's taking it out of the site.
I think it's part of their de-watering, or underslept de-watering. It's taking it out of that.
Yeah. But I'm saying if you start losing that, you're going to then get flooding. So, if the sump pump doesn't work, then the drainage system doesn't work.
They have an indoor pool. They're going to have an indoor pool.
Well, the fact... That's why I say it needs to have a generator. And that way, at least it'll work in a power outage.
Or they have battery backup.
Well, whatever. I mean, I mean, a generator's not a deal breaker in terms of cost or anything, so it's not...
It is when you have five people.
Yeah, it's a shared cost on maintenance and everything.
You know, so...
Oh, I didn't say that. I didn't... This is not for the units. This is just for the sump. The sump pump is not in the units, I don't think.
That's... I don't think it's...
All right, let's... Okay, can we... We'll just put it in, study it. Let's just be sure before we give them a final.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, this is final.
No, it's not. It's a preliminary.
It's a preliminary. They converted. They converted, but not enough to...
Go to ARC.
Yeah.
And I think a specific look at the lighting plan because I think that would actually make or break with all the work they've done here and also affect the neighbors if we're...
Well, they are. I mean, if you go to ARC, they'll be looking at the lighting plan, landscaping.
Landscape lighting.
When they go to ARC, they need to have that fronting...
I think they should have something to show them, yes.
They should have something to show them of that idea that we're talking about.
Street buffer.
That... No, no, the building looking more like it's the front of a building and not the side.
That's it.
So, do we want to see, before they go to ARC, a draft of that elevation facing the street?
I don't.
Even at...
I don't see how you could because that's...
Because we've closed it.
Depending at that point.
But as part of the... Part of our comment, just give notice to ARC that that's coming their way, and that's a contention of ours, a concern of ours.
Yes.
No, it's going to... Well, it was the first thing we talked about today, so it's going to be the first condition.
Well, yeah, exactly. It's going to be in the decision letter, and the ARC would get a copy of the decision letter.
That's what I'm talking about, having the ARC make sure they get their decision letter so they understand what they're... They need to look at.
Yeah.
That's it. Plus, the fact I do think that it's a positive whereas it should be here. I mean, I do think that they did a very positive redesign on this, but they got the parking out of the front yard. They're going to do less ledge removal. They got rid of the barracks look of the building. They have a better entrance for the driveway. The sightlines are now better on... Damn it, Hawthorne. That's it. That's my motion.
And the fact that they moved buildings.
I said that.
Oh, you did. I didn't hear you say it.
Who seconded? Who seconded?
Second.
Well, was the last one?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Milbrook Corporation. First one, who wants?
I think there were some, but I'm going to add yours.
Again, this is another preliminary. So, it'll be... The motion will be a move to final with nothing on the special permit. And the last one was a move to final, too.
Yeah, got that.
I got that. DPW has got to resubmit on this, so they need to go to them. The CEO had comments, so I guess I've got to go to the... Oh, yeah, they're going to get a special exception use, so they've got to go to the Zoning Board of Appeals. I think when they come back to us, they need to flesh out the planting plans that they're doing for this building. And I think on this side, that was it. That the... I think they did indicate that the... I think that seeding... I don't remember us coming up with any decisions on the seeding on this one. I mean, they just provided it.
Provided it, it was-
Seems okay.
Yeah.
The variances are just for the next application, right?
No, the, well, everybody's got to go to, for the, got to go to ZBA to get the special exception use.
And the variances, but the variances are just on the next one.
I, yes, there's no setback, well, you know, there's a variance on this one, too, because they've got that little kiosk.
Kiosk, okay. Got it, that's what I couldn't remember. Okay, so the variance on the kiosk.
Okay.
That's it.
Second, anybody? Leave me seconds, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we go to east.
East side.
Oh, incorporate the seating, oh, that's all right.
It was a whereas or something, you put it in there.
For the dining?
Yeah, well, we didn't make any decisions on it, we got the information, and I think we were-
Just whereas?
Yeah.
On the dining?
All right.
Okay.
Paddle tennis. Well, I'll go to my favorites here, they need to provide a handicap parking next to the ramp. I think that they did answer the, the issue of the lights that are there, but they'll have to get those obviously approved at, at ARC. They are keeping the 30-inch hook at the northeast corner of the parking. They did indicate that they've reached an accord with the neighbor on the east side of the parking, and that they will submit to us the park, the, the planting plan that's going to be developed for, for that area.
The variances?
Well, the variances, they need, they need a-
They need a special exception on the variance.
Well, they need special exception, and the variance that they need to get, I believe, is just a, a front yard variance. Because the parking, which is on the street, is already there, they're not incre, I think they're just remod, they're modifying that, the six spaces are remaining six spaces, so that doesn't change.
And the ARCS for, okay.
Well, forget ARC, but I think the only, words of the CEO on-
The trees in the parking? Trees in the parking?
I think that's something they could look at, but I have a feeling that we're going to end up losing what-
What did we do with that, I don't remember.
I think, again-
They're going to look at it, and they're going to come back and say they want to-
If you want the trees, we'll give up, give up five cars, and that's it, so...
Okay, so we're just going to say they're going to look at it?
They need, they need the front streets, this is from the CEO, they need the front and street-side yard setbacks for the proposed kiosk and front yard.
The kiosk is the-
Well, the kiosk is the other, that was the west building, and then a front yard setback for the tennis pavilion.
Okay.
I think his explanation of why it's where it is, I would, I would thought it was a legitimate explanation, and I do think the club is, is attempting to keep their facilities together, so I think it's a reasonable.
I agree.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, now, it comes to beauty. River Road.
River Road, we did it. Oh, no, River, South Water, River Road is, is, we didn't do anything on it. Left open, yeah.
Well, you shouldn't drink so much fluid.
Okay. Are we turning off the microphones?
Yeah, we're done, Don.
No, no, this is still, this is-
Oh, it's still on the record, sorry, sorry.
I'm sorry, what?
So, what I'd like to, to ask is that a motion be made in order to take up an item on the agenda that is not on the agenda now, you needed two-thirds vote, and that, that item is the documentation I sent you today on the memo from Jody Kutcher, the zoning enforcement officer.
So moved.
Okay, you moved, Richard moved, I second. And, and you'll be right back.
Okay.
So, rather than have this be on the basis of a short letter, and a short letter in front of ZBA, which is not necessarily very familiar with non-conforming uses, if it came back to us, we could have a proper discussion and perhaps create a record which is, does not end up with it back up there.
Well, I think, I think part of the applicant's-
It will, because we'll find, we'll find against it, based on Jody's interpretation.
And then they'll go back to ZBA. And the other thing, too, is I don't think that they're proposing, and the applicant is saying that they're asking for a change of a non-conforming use, which is what one would ordinarily apply for under section 6-141. I think they're making the, the argument that this is an intensification of a non-conforming use, and therefore, something they should be permitted to do through the zoning permit, not needing this commission.
What's the regulatory?
And that's where the argument comes up, because-
It's been held that if you acquire more square footage, that's called an expansion.
Right.
And that's what they're doing.
Right, and they're expanding into a conforming use, no less.
They're removing a conforming use and making it into a non-conforming use.
See, what we're doing, what we're doing, we're taking, speaking as, as a business sense now, we're taking a company that has done pretty well in Greenwich, and now, they want to expand in the same building, which makes sense from their viewpoint.
But it's illegal.
So, we're, so we're saying, form a new corporation.
We're not saying that at all.
A new corporation could move into the building.
No.
Because they're not related.
It has to do, it has to do with parking, and it has to do with the way this is written, and it says, "Anything which is deemed to increase non-conformity." If you can't meet the parking standards, it's, it's, the letter that is written, it's, it is therefore deemed to be increasing the degree of non-conformity.
And they're prohibited.
It just doesn't make logical sense to me.
He has a, the problem is, he has a non-conformity, so he's not permitted to be there if he came in off the street today. But he is permitted to be there because, because of a change in the rule. So, we're not going to kick him out, because he's, he was there before the rule changed, so he's a right to be there, and then-
As long as you don't improve your business.
Right, and, no, the law says you, you can intensify, which, let's say, he said, now, you know, I've, I've got this operation, I want to, I want to grow, and you are allowed to grow the business, so he's allowed to have more, more employees, you know, he can have, he can-
What do you mean by growing the business? As long as he stays in the same spot.
Yes, exactly, he's allowed to intensify the-
I understand, but it's, it's just not-
But you can't then expand the non-conformity into a conforming space. That's, that's the issue.
There's got to be a way to, I understand it completely, but it's one of these regulations that-
Donald, it's a, it's a-
No, I understand it.
But, no, but not just a regulation, the state law historically, for 100 years, by case law, is that you do not permit an increase in a non-conformity.
That I appreciate.
And so, it's not our reg, it's, it's-
No, and I'm for that regulation.
So, that's the, that's the deal.
It's just another space that's located there.
But, but if, 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 that's the, that's a hard and fast-
No, no, I, I believe in it.
Regulatory concept.
I believe in that regulatory concept.
So, that's-
But it's, it's just, there's, there's something missing, I gotta-
There's been a lot of creep in this building, I mean.
No, no, I, uh-
So, here's a compromise. Could we, we talked about this thing about ask, could, we could ask them to come before us, or we could just say we support, we agree with the ruling-
You don't want them to be, you don't want, that, that's not right.
Hold on, let me just finish. We agree with the decision that Mr. Couture made on this matter, and I, I think that with that, we're done. Because I, I think no matter how we get there, to Nancy's point, we're all agreeing that Jody's interpretation, his conclusion is correct, legally correct, and that's all we need to say. The fact that Donald has an issue with it at this point, or that you're, I think you kind of are questioning it from a business point of view as well, is irrelevant, because there's, as Nancy has been researching, there's tons of, tons of case law that goes in, in agreement with-
I don't have a problem with the law on this one, it's just that-
Katie, what's your thought, to do a parallel letter, or to just-
What if, what if, to the point that, that you were just going down, what if he wrote a letter that says, "The planning and zoning commission has read the letter from Mr. Kutcher dated February 29th, and, and concurs with, with his position," and then you can either leave it at that, or go one step further and say-
Stop, stop right there, I'll leave it right at that.
I'd like to hear what she has to say.
"Expanding a non-conforming office use into a conforming retail space deems the first floor of a building within the CGBR zone is not permitted."
That is a very important sentence.
Okay, and you agree with that wording?
In that sentence, yes, in terms of the next guy who comes down the pike.
Okay, but the way she's wording it, you're comfortable with, because when I talked to you-
Well, you don't, I'm just, okay.
Nancy, I think what Nancy's trying to say, and actually, which is right, is that, just that one sentence, Donald lied.
I wanted to say that sentence.
Next person tries it.
I'm totally in agreement.
That's the next sentence. It's been defined, that's a very good sentence, Katie, because that defines the-
So, we were in agreement.
Non-conforming into a conforming, and, yeah.
That's perfect.
You might add, there's a jeans thing, and, you know, the most recent tenant is, by fact, so, yeah.
So, we are in total agreement.
We're good.
Wonderful. Appreciate that, so I will-
Keep it simple, and don't need to expand upon it.
Exactly.
Don, are you around tomorrow to be able to come in and sign this memo?
Yeah.
Okay, that would be, that would be terrific. Thank you.
All right, okay, guys. I guess we did it.
Okay, Don, we're done.
Now you can go.
Okay. Nancy, I'm confused.